The April 2nd, 2020 emergency meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. Late in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning operation of the Marion County school system or the school board only. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
This is Beth McCall, District 2.
Here.
This is Nancy Stacy, District 1. This is Nancy Thoreau, District 4.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
This is Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Heidi Mayer, Superintendent.
Here.
This is Dan Green, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll now ask the school board if it's turning to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board this afternoon.
In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at today's meeting either regarding one of today's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available outside. Public speaker forms are also available in the same location. The completed forms were due to the, are due to the school board secretary no later than 5:15 PM. This afternoon, speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board meeting in the order of receipt by the school board secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to others. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedure for public comments, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. Thank you for your attention.
Good afternoon, everyone. Night, good afternoon, Stacy. We're going to move into this meeting. Can I have a motion to discuss the COVID-19 and the governor's stay-at-home order?
Move.
Moved by Ms. McCall, Mr. Thor, second to my miss call. All in favor? Aye. Aye. All right, we're gonna have discussion. As you all very well know, on yesterday, Governor DeSantis issued a stay-at-home order for the entire state. And at this meeting, we thought it necessary that we need to kind of be on the same page and make sure that we are communicating everything out to our folk and the parents so that they know that we are up on what's going on. I've met with Dr. Grantham, Dr. Mayor, and some of our area directors to make sure that we have the right plans in place for taking care of our kids and taking care of our staff. So I'm gonna ask Dr. Grantham to kind of come on up and give us a quick synopsis. Or Dr. Mayor, whichever one.
It's just a little hard to hear you, sir. So you said to...
Give us a quick synopsis, yeah, what's going on?
So Dr. Grantham is here, so just to give some context of yesterday.
Thank you.
I said this morning to the group that it was serendipitous that you had come in to talk to Dr. Grantham and I and get some, just catch up on some details. Because as we were meeting, we got a text that the governor was on TV and my response was, well, he's on every day. And Dr. Grantham said, no, I think we ought to turn it on. And we did, and that's when we got the news. And so we started a conversation then. Superintendent's had a call at 4:15 yesterday afternoon, and you joined me for that. And then we had the elected official call yesterday evening. And going through the order, I see Ms. Green has it as well. Schools are essential. Schools are listed as essential. So we are balancing that with keeping our folks safe, keeping our kids educated. And then this morning, we had our, I think, daily meeting, right? Daily 8:30 meeting, and Reverend Cummings, you joined us for that. So I'll, Dr. Grantham, if you can, fill us in on that. And then subsequent conversations that we've had today.
Yes, ma'am. So we zoomed with probably 10 people, Reverend Cummings. Had seven in my office, six feet apart, we hope. And we had conversations about now what do we do since this order's been given? So we went back and forth. We asked everybody to kind of think about it. What do you expect, what do you think? So we talked about schools, the buildings of schools. So after we had this conversation, probably an hour, hour and a half, we kind of came to the conclusion we need to kind of shut the schools down for the teachers to, we go home, stay home. We've kind of been implying that. I'll tell you, Well Forest High School started with 90-some-odd teachers, went to 40 on Tuesday, and they were, I think, 20 today. So we intended, we anticipated people would come in and get their materials and work from home. So then this, the group, and I'm speaking on behalf of the group, who goes to school? We, well, Mr. McFadden said, well, if we leave it vulnerable and there's nobody on school, then we're opening ourselves up to other things. So talk about having an administrator on campus with an essential group, whoever we're gonna talk about as the essential group. But having teachers work from home until May 1st, having people that wanted to work from home if they could. Now, we'll tell you, this is gonna change with IU Pat for next week, and we've had conversations with the union because there are folks that are essential that we have to, and Diane is very aware of that. So, and we're gonna have a conversation with them tomorrow about who comes to help us out. But that group decided today, and we were gonna bring it to you, and we asked Reverend Cummings, hey, do you feel pretty good about this? And he said, yeah. And we're bringing it to you for discussion and conversation. We want to limit, we feel like if we have 100 people that go to a school, that's 100 times more likely something will happen or someone will get sick. We don't want to take the autonomy away from teachers, but we don't want to continue to, because what's happening is if we bring 80 teachers, that's 80 rooms that has to be cleaned by people that might not come. So it's just kind of a domino effect. So the group this morning decided that we want to limit the people that are on campus, and that means adults. The student nutrition folks, they're different. Food services people are totally different because they gotta pack lunches and they get to the back of the campus. You all know how that works. They get there at 6:00, they get everything done. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about the people that come every day. So this group kind of said, to save possible spreading of this, we felt like we should limit the adults that are on campus for teachers. Reverend Cummings, did I miss anything with that first part?
No.
And it did go back and forth, but as individuals, and I'll tell you who is Lori Lively, Risk Management, Teresa Boston Ellis, Becky Rohr, all those people, Chris Altobello, Mark Avery, the union people. We all had that conversation that, and I'll tell you, the MEA stance is kind of being, please attempt to work from home. And Ms. King, I talked to you Monday or Tuesday about, some teachers are wanting to come to work and use their own stuff. Yeah, and then what happens is that we gotta come behind them. It's just, and then we have the bathrooms are being used, you gotta clean the restroom. So the kind of consensus from the group this morning was to instructional folks need to be at home until May 1st. And I'll tell you, I have three children that are going through, I have a 4th grader, 6th grader, and 8th grader. They're all three learning three different ways. But my 8th grader made a comment that surprised me today. He said, Dad, I've been working all day. And I go, good. That's great, because they literally have things to do all day. So it's not, here's a 10-minute assignment. So the teachers, and I do want to applaud the teachers. They have stepped up. They're doing a tremendous job. And it's new for everybody. And I was kidding with you, Ms. King. My 4th grader, the teacher opened the floor for questions on Zoom to a group of 4th graders. And that was just enjoyable to watch and listen to. The questions they asked, it was two hours later, the meeting was over. But that was kind of the talk this morning. Have an administrator, and it doesn't say the principal, they could rotate in and out. Have an essential group. So for example, we talked about bookkeepers at high schools. We gotta start refunding money now for things that, field trips that were paid for. There might be a day where the bookkeeper has to come in and help refund money to parents and get money back to folks. Because people, parents are now asking, well, we know we're not going on the 8th grade trip. Can we have our $170 back? So that's where we are right now. And please help guide us and talk to us. But it's a good meeting, a lot of people put their two cents in. They were all kind of leaning in that direction.
So our secretaries will not be on campus, correct?
Unless, unless the administrator feels that their secretary is essential for them.
Okay. Can you help me understand why, what is the importance of the administrator being on the campus?
We went back and forth on that several times because now you're, instead of having zero folks, now you just went to 52 right away, 52 people on campus. We felt like that if there was...
Separate campuses.
Yeah, I'm separate campuses. So we felt, we, Dennis, and a lot of people made this point. If there's nobody on campus, then you just open up your school to be extremely vulnerable to, you know, what happens in the summertime, you know, odd old times, devil's workshop.
You manage it in the summertime. I mean, the principal's not a guard.
Correct.
No, I know, I know, I know. And that was just...
I mean, it's almost like, would we be exposing our administrators or principals to safety concerns when we all know there's only one person on campus?
We went back and forth multiple times, Ms. King, about the principals coming on campus. And I, some people had the same sense you did. Should they, should they not be?
I agree with Ms. King.
Yep.
But there was, there are some principals that want to be able to access...
But this is not a point when they want.
Oh, 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 wait, 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 wait. I was still talking. Give me a second, come on.
You interrupted me.
No, I didn't. There are still some principals that, that is their baby. They want to go and check and make sure there's still, we still have to have people going there to do animals and stuff like that. There are just some principals that want to be there. I get what you're saying, but it's up to us to make the decision. If you say that you don't want anybody on campus, then nobody on campus. But at least hear the conversation before y'all just...
Well, I, I've... We have heard the conversation. That's why we didn't start talking until Mr. Grantham asked us to talk. And so I just got through talking to Dade County. And their principals are not on campus. And they're even having like drive-through, like, I don't remember the time. It was like four to seven, people who, parents who need devices. So Chromebooks and different things, they have a drive-through way for them to get them. Nobody comes in, it's a drive-through recognition. Phones that can be rerouted to houses are rerouted. And those campuses are empty. There are no administrators there. And so just for fun, I started trying to call some of them, you don't get anything. So it's set up strictly, and there is no hard, by the way, there's no hard copies being made and sent home either for people that, you know...
Talking about Dade County, Miss Stacy?
Yes. And there's no hard copies sent home, there's nobody in the office making copies and exposing themselves to parents who are coming in, picking stuff up and everything. And I mean, I don't, as a board member, to, to subject a single person to contact. Now, so the principal's using her restroom, and she's there, and the secretary. So then a cleaning person has to come in that night and clean. And now he's subjected to, what if the principal had it, or what if the secretary had it? You know, he's subjected, I think it's just a shell game. And I don't, and I understand, you know, there's somebody at the campus, but in the summertime, there's times when the campuses are empty. And that's what law enforcement's for. And right now, people are off the streets and law enforcement can watch our schools even closer because there's not a lot of stuff going in the bars and everything going on right now.
RROs have been pulled. RROs have been pulled for patrol in the community.
Has been pulled?
They've been pulled, correct.
So then, so then we're gonna have a principal at a school by herself? Not on my watch.
Well, what we also have, we just started passing out the Chromebooks this week. There are still a lot of schools that have not completed giving out Chromebooks.
Well, but they...
And one of the things, one of the things that that administrator could do, if need be, would be to make sure those ones that are picking up Chromebooks get it.
Hey, but parents can, can work to our, to our time also. In Dade County, they have a window, and it's like 4:00 to 7:00. I don't remember what it was. And it's a drive-through pickup. And another thing they're doing in Dade County, as best I could understand, because I got as much information as I could, and believe me, because no one's working, it wasn't easy. They are, like, they're not going to all these elementary schools and picking up lunches and all that. They're going to the major high school. Like North Marion High School would be the pickup spot for the lunches and that sort of thing. And it's not, they're not coming to individual elementary schools. The major high school that serves that area's doing it. And instead of willy-nilly, everybody's doing it. And I think the fewer people, there's not gonna be, there's not gonna be anything going on in the schools. There's no reason for our administrators or secretaries or anyone to be there unsupervised with no, if the SRO officers are pulled. That's all the more reason for them not to be there. And so I'm for everyone working from home. And I know there's always an exception where someone has to go into a school and maybe come and get one of our law enforcement people here to go with them, you know, to go into a school to make sure they're safe or whatever. But I see no reason, at least until, like, if it looks like the schools are gonna open up the week before May the 1st or however, and I know you have to have a planning situation, but for the next three weeks, I can't see putting anyone at risk in any way.
So we do print packets, though. We do, because we have students without internet, and they've been picking them up from schools. So that would cease.
Well, and I, you know what, at this point in the game, I think it's okay if it ceases. We are at a time, we're living in a pandemic. And we're at a time where our borders of our country is closed. Ships are not allowed in. Our state, I didn't know...
After four of them died.
Okay. But anyways, we're at a time where we are at a stay-at-home order, and there is no need to unnecessarily expose anyone to what is out there at this point. I, education is extremely important and, but the safety and the well-being and the protection of everybody in our community is our priority right now. That's where I stand. Look, we take off months, two and a half months in the summer. Our children and our teachers and our employees, everyone's resilient. But we want everyone to be able to come back in May or June or whenever the time is being well and safe. You know, we'll get through this. But right now, safety is the priority. And my opinion is that everyone at this point should be home. With the exception, I do understand there is some expensive machinery or there are animals, you know, because right now, we can't, there's gonna be unintended consequences, and we can't foresee everything until we leave here and then the phone starts ringing. So we do need that. But other than that, everyone needs to be home and taking care of themselves. And that's my thought, just...
And I appreciate that. Under the order, though, schools and education is an essential function. If we don't provide those hard copy packets to kids without internet, that is an equity issue.
Right.
They're not providing them in Dade County. There's, that's a much bigger district than us.
But Dade County has the infrastructure where there's availability for Wi-Fi and internet service.
Okay, but you know what I say at this point? Come, if it's an equity issue or whatever, come get us then for protecting our county and saying, stay at home right now. I'm okay with that. I mean, if that's what it takes, I, because I've heard the craziest stories. Our employees are being exposed again and again. And I, I don't...
Where are they exposed?
In our schools.
Depending what way.
Let me make a suggestion.
I'm not gonna argue with you.
But you just said a very serious statement that puts us in a litigious situation. So if you're going to say that we are, and ultimately, that would be me that is responsible, that our teachers are being exposed, then please do provide those details.
When the parents come.
When parents come?
No, you said they have been exposed. So please, please flesh out those details, Ms. King, or retract that statement.
She's not retracting anything.
I'm not gonna...
Then what have we done?
Do you let me speak? I'm trying to speak and no one will allow me.
Listen, we're gonna, listen, this is not a time for us to disintegrate into anything. This is time for us to protect our people. This is time to make wise decisions. This is time to do what's do us right.
Statements from the...
Hold on, Dr. Mayor. This is the time, this is the time to do what's fair and right. So we're gonna do this orderly. We're gonna do this orderly, so we're gonna, we're gonna make a decision.
I'm gonna make a suggestion about the hard packet.
Hold on, we're gonna let Dr. Mayor finish talking, and we'll let Ms. King have the opportunity to rebut. Is that fair? Dr. Mayor, what were you saying?
I wanted to know where our folks were exposed.
Obvious.
It is obvious. When you have 90 teachers at a school, we do not know who has COVID-19 and who doesn't. Teachers enter and leave, they use the same restroom, they gather together. They even order lunches together, get in the vehicle, drive together, and they go back in their classrooms to eat. That, to me, is exposing our employees. That's just one example, and I'm not here...
I can't prevent them from driving together. Could you tell me what...
Can we just end this? I don't wanna argue.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, ladies. Hold on, hold on.
Gathering and clapping.
Wait, 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 Dr. Mayor. Hold on, hold on, okay. So this is what we're gonna do. Because we not, this is not a time to disintegrate into what you're going into. So, Ms. McCall.
You also have two board members that haven't said a whole lot yet.
Yeah, Ms. McCall. She's...
I think it's very important that we continue to get these Chromebooks out to these kids. So if we have to set a schedule where parents can pick up at a certain time, then that's what we need to do. We do not want these students, but I do think there needs to be a deadline. I think that it needs to be picked up by. And if they don't, then they don't have a Chromebook. So shame on them.
Then what, let me ask this question then. Because I got a call right before I came here about a parent who lived on the farm and who does not have access to internet. And...
So my next suggestion is, I think the packets are very important. My understanding is, the packets that we now have are for a two-week period of time. Is that correct?
No, ma'am. That was over the extended spring break. Now our teacher, now students are picking up from the school, the actual teacher packets.
But how long is that for a two-week period of time? It's on a daily basis?
Well, it's a week at a time. And we have to remember, too, our kids at Hillcrest, they need those packets.
So my suggestion is gonna be, can we...
Two total weeks so far. We've had two total weeks done. If you add this...
So I would like to be able to see, because I do not want to jeopardize those children, but I, but I also want to limit the amount of exposure. So if we can do those pickup packets for, can they plan for two weeks out?
So let me kind of walk us back. If we tell the teachers they can't come beginning Monday, we have to allow them on campus tomorrow to get prepared. To know you're gonna ask the teachers to do a lot tomorrow to get ready for Monday. So we can do anything, but I don't think it's fair to tell a teacher you can't come on campus Monday and if you gotta have everything done tomorrow. You know, I mean, that's two weeks of, that's gonna take some planning and preparation. So we can pull it off, but not with a deadline of Monday.
Correct. So I just, and I know that some schools are just actually putting cardboard boxes, putting the packets inside. Parents can come by and pick it up at their leisure. When they're gone, they're gone. I mean, we're not gonna be able to solve the problem for everybody. But I do think we need to be reasonable, we need to be safe. But we also need to think about providing educational packets for our kids. I do not want us to go, I do not want these children to be out of an educational setting for weeks and months at a time. So whatever we need to do for our children that are not internet accessible, we need to provide for them.
Weren't they picking some of them up at Walmart or something?
That, that was...
What was that?
That was a packets, that was over the extended spring break. There were some packets there.
That was supplemental material that the district created for all the students.
Right. But we're not gonna, if, if there is a stay-at-home order, which there is, we don't want to go on to Walmart either. We don't want to go on to Walmart. Ms. Thor?
Yeah, going to Walmart would be more exposing than going to your schools. You know, I got this email at 4:21 PM that campuses will be closed until further notice. So that hasn't given me a whole lot of time to really mull this over. But maybe other folks had an idea that this may be coming because I've heard from several very esteemed educators. And what they have shared is that in order to do our jobs now, we must have access to a good computer and internet service. And I get that because typically, we don't want to educate kids using packets. You know, we do much more interactive education nowadays. We have kids that are nonverbal. We have kids that can't write. We have kids that can't read. You know, having the ability to zoom into, into a home is way more ideal than packets. And we have to think about the needs of our particular county. And Orange Springs, all the way down to Yum-Mat-Lah. You know, we've got people on those, those backroads that we have to reach. And there was a lot of emotion here the other night about the fact that our district had come a long way, and now we had schools that weren't gonna get the opportunity to shine. Two schools in particular, Evergreen and Oak Crest, that unless we fast-track our request to the Department of Education to see if we can not have an external operator next year, they're going to, you know, be back in that boat and further behind. Because I thought we had a plan. I thought we had a hybrid version. My assumption was that a cleaning plan was part of that. And that appeared to be very well received. And at this point, when I read the order, education is still considered essential. And how we deliver that would obviously look different depending on the county, depending on the size of the county, depending on whether it's a citified place or if it's a country, a lot of, a lot of folks spread out. So let me just share a couple thoughts from the people that are actually educating kids. And, and what was shared with me was, we have teachers that cannot get internet in the area where they live. We have teachers with service that is not high-speed and will not support some of the programs being used. My husband spent an hour on the phone with Cox Cable yesterday trying to find out why our internet strength keeps going out. We also purchased a new modem. We have a college student at home trying to take classes online. This particular teacher chose the option of working at school part of each day. She's coming in right now, or he, from 8:00 to 12:00 to conduct Zoom meetings, video lessons, upload items to the website, dojo, provide individualized instruction. Obviously, there's some special needs kids in there, assigning iReady lessons, using resources to create lessons that are developmentally appropriate. And, you know, these are things that can't be done at home without, you know, with their current computer and so on. I also heard from a librarian, which, you know, I hadn't really thought of that. But a librarian can't pack up their books and take them home. And it also is a great opportunity for them to clean their books and do the kinds of things that they all would like to be doing except they're having student contact 100% of the day. So I think before we just go slam the door on, on anything, maybe we all just need to take a deep breath and decide, okay, you know, what was really wrong with the hybrid plan? And was it really, is it violating anything to continue to give those, those choices to people? What I have heard is that the cleaning plan still needed some catching up with. But I also heard some teachers say, I'm just cleaning my own room because then I know that it was done and it was done right, and I'm only using one corner, you know, whatever. So I'm feeling a little bit more pragmatic about the whole thing and that maybe it's important for us to look at our picture of Marion County and not anyone else's and, and what's been received well so far. And what I have heard 100% is, having the option has been huge. And the ones that have had the option to come to school have been being smart about it and maintaining their social distance. What we need is some more essential personnel, which, when you have a medical issue on your hands, is, yeah, you need places being cleaned. And the teachers need to be provided with the wipes and things that they need if they want to come to school. So that's where I am with this.
Any other comments?
I can't disagree with Ms. Thoreau. I would just like to apologize for the email. It went out early. It shouldn't have gone out till after the board meeting. So we, we own that. So we apologize for that.
Because that did make it tough. I was like, wait, what?
Oh, well, I'll tell you, too, we had a conversation this morning. And I did ask Reverend Cummings, do we feel good about saying teachers are not coming? We did have that conversation this morning because I didn't want to assume anything. We did have that conversation this morning, because I didn't want to assume anything, because I knew discussion wouldn't happen. But that group entered, Reverend Cummings said, yeah, we feel that has to happen. I mean, and you do have, every time a teacher comes in, there's, that's happening. And you're right, Ms. Thoreau, the people did like the hybrid. And then yesterday, they pulled the rug out front of us again. And the more people that come in, the likelihood goes up of infecting others, and I get it, you know, and-
So do we have the ability to get our staff hotspots for their homes that do not have the internet capability? I mean, if we're gonna expect them to work from home, we have to be able to provide them with the tools necessary to reach their students.
Well, Ms. McCall, we, Mr. McIntyre and I had this conversation this morning too, and I said, we don't even know how many people we're talking about. We have no clue on that until we say this is where we're headed. I mean, we don't, we don't, we don't know. I don't, and I'm assuming, and it might be a bad assumption, that most have internet access, most have computers, and then we have Chromebooks that we can give teachers as well. And then we'll have to figure that out. But again, it's the, and I keep saying, it's kind of Maslow, the hierarchy of needs. It's the food, the shelter, are you healthy? And then we get to all the education pieces, and that's kind of where we are. What are we doing to protect our folks?
And I think the mentality of the, the group that met this morning was to basically not have as many folk on campus, limiting to just that essential group of people. The governor's orders does not say that we can't do what we're doing now. But for the sake of safety, we have to look out for our people. We know that some, we know that, we know that there's a possibility that they can get contaminated at school.
In a school that has room for a lot more than twenty-five staff members, I would think that, you know, a bathroom could be designated. Or, you know, there's ways around this, especially in elementary schools. There's usually a bathroom or a shared bathroom between two classrooms, right? So, that teacher would just be, they would have their own personal bathroom. And, and so, again, this, this is being shared from the trenches. Our school has an average of twenty-five staff members present daily this week. I'm sure this is data you can obtain easily. Most employees are in classrooms alone, and all are abiding by social distancing and hand-washing guidelines. Six people are not coming to work. And if we're gonna charge teachers with teaching, then I think that we need to give them the ability to do that.
Let me say this, Ms. Thoreau. I've been at, I think, eight schools this week. And one thing that I saw, they all came in through a common area. So they all were exposed, even though they, even though they went to their own separate areas, they all were exposed to whatever the person before them went through. And, and then they're going into different areas, so you still have to keep cross- At some point, we have to, I get what Ms. King said, and I agree. At some point, you gotta lock this thing down. And the only way you're gonna lock it down and get this thing resolved is, we gotta quit contaminating the same areas that we're going into. My suggestion this morning, and I'll say it publicly, was that once we get these people out of these rooms, and once they're out, they get clean, seal the, seal the room, seal the room up. They don't go back into that room. That way, it's not, it's not getting contaminated again and again and again. The library, the kids aren't using the library, library should be cleaned and sealed. The cafeteria, they're not using the cafeteria, it should be cleaned and sealed. But if you, if we keep bringing all these different people on campus, that's gonna be the issue.
It's almost like, at this point, do we either teach or not? You know, and that's not what the, the state is providing for. They're saying that we have to, to keep teaching.
Right, but they have us online. Let me, let me ask y'all something. What if, like, you know, the district, I know the schools have copy machines, if, as far as these hard copies that y'all are talking about, if someone did, like a clerk, or a receptionist, or secretary, or somebody, had room, because they are working from home, could put the copy machine at her house, and then someone, they email the stuff to her, and she just runs it through and makes up the packets and gets them to the-
They're huge machines. They're huge copy machines. And anything smaller would be-
It's not like a billion dollars' worth of ink, sadly.
Yeah.
But it's a great thought.
Yeah. And you have, and guys, let me say this, because I don't want to-
Could they be done, like, in one cer, instead of every school copying, could they have a central copy issue going on, like, in one of these buildings that's like this, or something?
That, that is kind of what happened the first week, correct? There was, there was a central location at MTI.
Reverend Cummings, let me explain the difference between the two. So the first week was supplemental, based off your grade level. This is specific to what your teacher's doing.
Right.
So the supplement went out and said, here, do this to entertain yourself or keep your children busy academically. And the next one is, this particular fourth-grade teacher is sending out what we're doing in class every single week for their classes. They're eighteen students, or twenty-two students.
Class-specific.
If there was a, um-
Very specific.
But even a person, if they're at MTI and they're copying, if teachers are emailing, there's, there's maybe a team of two or three, and they're making these copies at a central location through the emails, the teachers are emailing, okay, I need you to print this. I'm sure she's got a PDF, or whatever y'all call it, ABC, or whatever. And she, they copy it, and they make the packets up. A courier could put the packets in front of the school that every, wherever it's gonna be picked up at, and then parents just go pick it up. We've got shade and all, I mean, we've got places that a courier could just put it, and that way, and there would be no reason to even open the school. The school would not, the doors wouldn't even need to be opened.
So I think the first thing is, do we open or do we not? That's the first thing. And then if we, if we don't, then we gotta figure that path out. If we stay hybrid, we gotta do that. So we gotta-
I know, I, I can't, I can't say we need to have fifty administrators at a school. We're like picking and-
They would be at their individual schools.
Right, but I mean, at their school.
I say still, let it, let it be their choice. Let it be that administrator's choice.
I said, let it be the teacher's choice. They're the ones that are obligated.
But I don't know, though, that then we gotta have it cleaned, and then that's gonna expose our cleaning people to it. This is just for probably three weeks.
We can't, Ms. Stacy, we cannot say that. We said that it was gonna be two weeks. We said it was gonna be one week. We don't need, as public officials, elected-
Now, we know right now it's gonna be until May the first. We know we got three weeks.
We know that right now, but every time-
Well, it can change, and we can-
Yeah, so we need to not kind of-
No, 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 Reverend Cummings, you're taking what I'm saying wrong again, okay?
I don't want to take it wrong. I just don't want to keep putting deadlines on it.
We know that for three weeks, there's no reason for anybody to be at those schools.
Okay.
Tomorrow, they may change it, and it may, they may not come back at all.
Right.
So, but right now, we know for a fact that things are not gonna change as what we were just told, until May the first. So, we got three weeks that there's not really a reason. And then as that three weeks starts to get to the end, and we go, okay, looks like we are opening May first, we need to get the schools back open again and get things rolling again. But for this three-week window to try our best not to expose anyone, and, and to have an administrator at a gigantic high school by herself, possibly, or hisself, I mean, for what? What are they doing while they're there? Walking the hallways and making sure no one's breaking in? Well, that's not good. What are they doing?
Ms. King?
Well, my observations from watching the news and listening, the best thing that we can do is to stay home. Everyone needs to stay home, and then hopefully, the COVID-19 can run its little course, whatever it needs to do, go away. And the sooner the better. But as long as nobody is staying at home and staying in their circle and letting it run its course, it's not gonna go away. It is going to go worse. And we also know, from this point moving forward, it is gonna get worse. It's gonna get a whole lot worse. And again, I think our priority is for the safety, protection, and well-being of everyone in our community. That's my thoughts on it. As far as packets go, you know, it's a packet. It's probably busy work. Because if you are just creating a packet to give to your student, it's not, uh-
Not great, interactive. It has to be on their instruction level.
It is, it, right, and it would have to be instruction level. And I've already received the phone calls from parents that have received the packets, and they're frustrated because they're like, this is too hard, or this is something. And that's what it, guys, simply, it's a packet. It is a month of our time. It is not fun. I don't, I mean, I'm a teacher at heart. I'm in education, and I believe in education, but right now, I believe in safety. I, I promise, guys, they take off every summer, they come back in August, and they're ready to learn. But if, if we don't do our due diligence now and keep everyone safe, then I'm, my concerns are that we may have some employees or students that aren't here to teach, be a principal, be, you know, a student. And that's my concern. So I'm holding firm that I am comfortable saying that it's okay to, to stop, close our doors. If, if, if the teachers can teach and can find a way through video and the parents, then that's great. You're doing what you can. But, you know, to give a packet at this point because we can and we feel like we should, because that's what we always have, right, it's-
No, I think it's more than feeling good. It's those teachers reaching those kids who don't have internet. Please do not disrespect our teachers by saying it's busy work.
When the parents call, and they're saying that, that they can't even help their kids with it because they don't understand it, and then there's not really any person to call.
They can reach out to the teacher, and the teachers have provided phone numbers, and the principal is there as well.
Have they got their home phone?
It's not busy work. These teachers are working hard.
And I, I hope no one disputes that.
Working very hard. They're running round and round in circles, trying to not know what to do.
They know exactly what to do.
Ms. Thoreau, Ms. Thoreau, Ms. Thoreau?
Yes, they do.
Where we're tripping here is that the definition of essential, because obviously, medical personnel have to go to work. Obviously, garbage men have to pick up trash. Our classification is still essential, but it creates a whole lot of gray area. You know, maybe what we need is some sort of subsequent guidance from the state saying, no, if this is what it's gonna be, then just shut it down. Nobody's getting anything.
That's what they said in the call yesterday.
What they said, and I wrote it down.
No, no online, no, no packets, no nothing. Stop.
They said that education must continue.
Yeah.
The commissioner said, and Chancellor Olivia, Olivia gave it again yesterday. Yesterday, he said, whatever we do, we must do it with compassion, grace, and urgency. He added the urgency yesterday. So whatever decision that we're gonna be doing, we had the compassion and grace already there. We cannot, this is my, this is my issue. If we say there's no packets going out, the kids that are gonna get affected are the kids that look like me. They're gonna be those kids that are poor kids, black kids, or minority kids that are not getting the packets because they don't have the internet. We can't do that. We can't, we, we, we just got through dealing with stuff with Evergreen, still dealing with stuff with Evergreen, and to leave out a group of kids for thirty days without anything is wrong. All day long, East Marion.
Can we have a central office that does the packets?
What about our homeless kids?
Thank you. We, we cannot, those, that's a whole segment of kids. And it's gonna be poverty, it's gonna be the kids that are most susceptible to poverty that are gonna fall by the wayside in a pandemic situation. Because we're saying, we're saying, we're saying that the ones that got the, the, the internet, the ones that have the Wi-Fi, they're good. To hell with the rest of them. We can't do that.
I'm not saying that. Reverend Cummings, I have not heard anyone that you say that. I'm talking about a central place to make these packets.
And you said packets were busy.
The problem with that, Ms. Stacy, is that each teacher has their own lesson plans. Now, how is a, a central place gonna take Mrs. Smith's lesson plans for the week? She's gonna, she's gonna copy it. The courier's gonna get Mrs. Smith's. They're gonna go put that packet in Mrs. Smith's box at, at Mrs. Smith's school. I don't think-
Why? Why are they gonna do that? Why isn't there a central place to pick it up?
How are the, the ones that need the packet don't have the transportation to get to a central place? That's why we have feeding programs all over the county.
So that's the reason-
That's why we're not doing it at North Marion High School. That's why we're going everywhere with the feeding program that has to continue also, if we can talk about that.
Okay, Drama Queen, wait a minute.
That's what these packets are for, to go to the school that is the outlier.
So how's the parent gonna get there? If she can't get to the central office, how's she gonna get to the school?
That's where we have to step up.
I say the high school. I say the high, the, the high school that serves in the area, which is exactly what Dade County's doing, the high school that serves the feeder elementary schools. Everything's picked up at one central location.
What's the closest high school for a kid that lives in East Marion?
I don't know. I don't know where they go to high school.
North Marion High School, am I right? How far is North Marion-
How far is it from Fort McCoy?
How far is North Marion High School to East Marion High? It's at least twenty, thirty miles. Am I right?
Oh, yeah.
Well, you know, you have outlier schools like that, but then you've got Reddick and Fazentown and everybody that's just right fairly close to North Marion. You might have some exceptions. We are never going to be able to have a plan that doesn't need tweaking. So, what we can, as best as we can, Forest High School, there's no sense in having Ward Highlands and this one and that one. And, you know, Ward Highlands, I guess, feeds to Vanguard. No sense in having all those little elementary schools. They can get to Forest High School. That's not very far.
I disagree with that. I, I totally disagree.
Well, then put them at the front of the Ward Highlands then. Let the courier take them and put them at the front of Ward Highlands. I don't care, but print them at a central location, take them to the school, Ms. Smith's class, put them in. Why does Ms. Smith have to walk them outside to the parents?
We're not saying Ms. Smith has to do that. We're not saying that.
Well, she's, somebody said Ms. Smith-
I said, I think that it's a logistical nightmare and not, not realistic to think that in a central location, then to pack them up and have a courier get them to the right school for Mrs. Smith's box at, at Ward Highlands.
Why can't it be in the front of the school at the pickup spot?
It can, but it still has to be in Mrs. Smith's box, because Mrs. Smith's class lessons may be different than Mrs. Jones'.
Can't you have a little pickup, like, have, if you got thirty teachers at the school, you got a spot here for Ms. Smith, you got a spot here for Ms. Smith?
Well, yeah, but I'm still saying it's, logistically, if you're doing that with every single elementary school, that's-
It makes more sense than exposing three thousand teachers.
But we're not saying it's supposed to be three thousand people.
Oh, we're, well, we're gonna pick and choose who we're gonna expose.
We're saying, we're saying it-
Whoever feels like being exposed can be exposed, okay.
Well, there is something called personal responsibility.
Well, if they want to be exposed, and I don't know that they really do.
We have, listen, we have some dedicated folk that would lay their life on the line for these kids, that do it, that have done it. And there are some that will come to, to the school to make sure that they get these packets and go home.
But do they want their parents to die, or their family to die because they laid their life down for the child? Okay, now, they've got family that's elderly possibly, that's now gonna get sick. I don't think that we need to ask that of them.
We're not. In a hybrid option, you're not asking that of them. You're giving them choice, which is freedom. And that's something that we need to keep in mind here, because we do have a really, really dynamic and diverse district with, with a lot of needs. And so I hope that we're moving now to problem-solving. And how can we-
What about the teacher, Ms. Thoreau, that has a, a husband that's on oxygen? And she doesn't have Wi-Fi, so she can't teach her class.
Well, maybe we could get her a spot, a hotspot. Maybe that would be one of those individualized situations.
Why can't we just get them all hotspots? That's what, someone asked that question. Ms. McCall, anybody that needs hotspots, that we have, we went, let's go back to that question.
There's an expense involved.
We would need to, first, we would need to know the necessity or who needs the hotspot.
Right.
That's number one. And then we need to find out the cost that's involved with that. If we have enough hotspots to go around for that, the thing is, the, the thing is-
If we ask, we won't know.
The thing is to limit, the thing, yeah, the thing is to limit the, the number of people. I hear what you're saying. I hear what everybody's saying. If we, and that was, that was kind of the reasoning behind giving the administrator the option, and the administrator the option to have one or two people on campus with them, because they could send their, their lesson plan in through a PDF. That secretary could, they could call and say, hey, I'm coming there to pick up Billy's homework.
Now, she's supposed to Billy.
No, no, no. The parent calls to the school, says, I'm coming to pick up Billy's homework. The, whoever the essential person is that the administrator has there, prints off their PDF, takes it outside, sticks it in the box, the parent comes and pick it up. There has been no interaction.
Why don't we let the parent be responsible and give a window that the parent comes, not come willy-willy at seven-thirty, at one-thirty, at three-thirty?
That's even better. I'm agreeing with you on that. I'm just saying, we still have to take in consideration, there is a segment of people out there that do not have the same resources as everybody else.
Okay, so someone said we could do it once a week? Do it on, like, do Monday lesson plans for a week? Didn't someone say that? And then let the secretary print them all up like Monday? Or come in Tuesday and print them up, and then there's no one there the rest of the week?
Depending on how many teachers are in the school, that's a lot.
We could not leave that up to the administrator, what day he wants his folks to print.
Well, no, I'm saying, I'm just using Monday for an example, Ms. McCall, because-
I, I would, I like-
Like, for example, I didn't say-
Let, let the administrator and their essential staff, whomever volunteers, because they still have the option to come.
But we were, I was just-
But we're limiting, we're limiting that traffic, that footprint on that campus.
But I just heard that we're gonna have a principal at every school, was what I heard when I first got here. Every day.
It's still open, it was optional, correct? It's still open, it was optional, correct?
We'll do whatever you tell us.
If there are teachers on campus, then there would need to be an administrator there.
That's why I say no teachers.
We also have food service.
And food service.
Right.
Doing the grab and goes.
Right.
I think the key word is the urgency piece.
Yeah.
Correct.
It's go time now. We got to do something.
And the urgency piece is let the administrators decide if they're going to come, if they're going to bring another person or two people to get this, to continue to facilitate education. But keep the other people, like you're saying, teachers stay home.
And I, I, I can cer, I can go for that. Let the administrator and an essential person that he or she sees, we got food service on campus doing, and teachers stay home, but we need to provide the resources. Well, that's it, and that's where we're getting hung up, because teachers are just as essential as, as administrators. We're all essential, and that's what makes this tough. And, and when it states clearly, you know, the law states that we are essential. You know, educators supporting public schools for the purposes of facilitating distance learning or performing other essential functions. They're essential workers, and they're saying some of us need to access our classrooms. They're asking. Now, do we tell them no and say, "That flies in the face of what's being handed down to us, that you're essential, but, but your way of doing it is, is, we're not going to let you do?"
I would recommend, Ms. Thoreau, that we give them access to get into their classrooms tomorrow, Monday, if that the latest.
And that they need to come to us to say what they need to be successful at home then, as educators.
Yeah, and get those things that they need.
Then they need a hotspot.
And if they need a hotspot, they need to let their administrator, their principal, know that they need a hotspot at home.
Right.
But we, we got.
They've got to know that.
Ms. King was right. You got to stop the people from being on campus. But you, but we can't just keep, we're not trying to stop anybody from working. We're trying to kill a virus.
Right. And not hamstringing, you know, hardworking teachers that feel like they're under the responsibility to continue educating to the best of their ability. And so we need to know who they are that don't have what they need to educate to the best of their ability, and how closely can we come to matching what they need? We, we might not be able to match it all, but, but I'm sure we can do more than, this is new. It's just unrolling.
They might need a better computer at home that maybe we have.
Yeah, I'm sure there's all kinds of options.
At the school or something, a better computer that they can take home that they don't have.
They actually have the option to be able to take a computer on.
Take whatever they, yeah, we have teachers taking some of the manipulists from elementary home to use, to show.
Let's, let's try and agree on a couple of things. Who are we going to allow on campus first?
An administrator and their essential person.
And let the, let the, and let the administrator decide who those are.
Well, or let the person decide if they want to go, because they might have an older person at home that they can't expose.
We've said that numerous times. We have a principal that doesn't come now because they have an elderly parent.
Right.
They're not coming, and that's already happening right now.
But there's an administrative team at each school.
I don't want the administrator to say, "Okay, secretary, you have to."
Well, I'll tell you the example we told them to. We said, "And administrator." So there is a school where there's both a principal and an AP that.
I don't think that principal needs to be there every single day.
No, what I'm saying is, so neither the principal or the AP can come, therefore somebody else, an administrator, not the principal, the AP has to be on that side to help, however we deem, whoever needs to plug that hole for right now. Yeah, and we're not going to say you have to come every day. We're not going to say you have to come every other day.
And we're not even going to say you have to stay there all day.
Now, let me ask you this question.
Yes, ma'am.
When a parent calls the school and says, "Um, I'm trying to figure out how I get my child enrolled in kindergarten," or whatever, do we need to have something on the master website or something, some type, something that says, "This is what you do. Click, if you're trying to enroll your kindergartner for next year, click here," and it'll give you instructions, you know, so that nobody has to, because I know a school that got that call yesterday, and the, um, guidance clerk just happened to be there, so could take the call. And so, um, that way it worked, but if the guidance clerk had not by coincidence been there, the secretary wouldn't have been able to tell her what to do, so.
The secretary would be able to answer that question.
But the phones are, the phones could be forwarded.
Right. So we.
And the guidance clerk is still, is, they're still on the clock. They're still supposed to be doing their job at home.
That's another question. Can the phones be forwarded of the extensions, though? Like the main number for, say, Forest High School? Can the extension be forwarded also?
You have it two ways. You can have it emailed to you, or you can have it delivered to your phone, or both. And we're doing that right now, because you gave me an example the other day. Um, someone legal had it forwarded.
Yeah, someone, therefore, that's why I got that, where I got the idea from. Why can't we just forward phone books?
We have that happening right now at a lot of places.
So, so I think, let, let's address the Chromebook situation first. I think that we need to give a cutoff for parents picking up Chromebooks. I really, really do. Whether that is Monday or Tuesday of next week, and if you have not gotten your Chromebook by then, you don't get a Chromebook for your child.
Well, we can, having the administrator on campus gives us some more time, so we get something to do Monday or Tuesday. But you're right, there needs to be a firm date. This is by.
There does need to be.
And if you've seen, they've had on their mask, they had their gloves, they had their, they, they've been doing a good job, and there's been a lot of parents that have gotten Chromebooks.
Because I know a school that the mother called and said she was coming to get the Chromebook. She called at two o'clock. They were still waiting for her at four, and at four twenty she got there. And the school, they were supposed to be gone by two twenty or something, so, yeah. They need, we need to tell them what time they're coming.
Give you a cutoff date, and if y'all want to give me one and say Tuesday, if that's.
I would say if they, they, they started school Wednesday, and let's say by next Wednesday, if those Chromebooks are not picked up, your child does not get a Chromebook.
We had, we had parents.
I think that's a little too long.
We had parents coming Monday, this week too.
Okay, so then, so.
I mean, Monday and Tuesday, already to pick up.
Can we send a little message through, through?
Through Kevin.
Let's say. Because let's, let's face it, parents are also trying to organize their, reorganize their whole worlds and their whole lives. So while it may seem like a long extension to us, they'll probably appreciate it.
Let me go back to the three words, compassion, grace, urgency.
But parents have to have a sense of urgency too, not just.
Their urgency may be just to try to keep food in their house.
But.
Well, they need to get their Chromebook.
And so we got to, so, so we got to make sure that they're getting that message out there. I agree, there needs to be a cutoff. But I don't think that cutoff may need to be Monday or Tuesday or something.
Y'all tell me, and we'll go with the date Tuesday.
Let's say Tuesday. Let's say Tuesday.
Tuesday after.
End of work.
Can we get a consensus on Tuesday?
Yes.
Ms. King?
I think it should be tomorrow, like y'all said. I, I, I have a different philo, like, what, the way my opinions and thoughts are, are different than y'all's. Um, so you have your consensus. I think it should be tomorrow, as it was stated, I believe already, but.
Okay, so Tuesday is the cutoff.
And as, as far as the packets are concerned, I know with food service, we have to be very careful about who's handling the food, but could packets be given out concurrently by the administrator?
I'm going to suggest a few things when we talk about packets, so.
When things are being picked up?
The specifics that Ms. McCall was talking about with a particular teacher providing her child with, that is a logistical nightmare. We can't, our department, like Ms. Beck did already, Mr. McCall did, we can't provide packets that if they're not getting anything, we can say, "Here's, here's at least something," versus, "My teacher can't reach out to my specific child," so we can give them something that is grade level appropriate.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I mean, I.
But that, and again, that kind of is like the busy work that you were saying. Um, that specific class work has to come from their teacher, right?
Yeah, what I'm saying is, so for example, the teacher, and we're doing a lot of what-if scenarios. What if the teacher doesn't have the ability to? What if the kid can't get it? Here's something to do.
So the worst-case scenario, you got to, you got something.
You got something, you know, and.
And let's put technology to work for us. I mean, teachers can print things from, from their car, you know? And if there's one or two people at a school, then teachers can pull and print.
A lot of teachers are doing that now.
Print, and then somebody can set it outside like Grubhub.
They're not even getting, they're not even getting out of their car. They're literally driving their car to the campus, connected to wifi, and then leaving.
Right.
A lot of folks doing that run.
Yeah.
Because we shoot that signal.
Students doing that too.
Students doing that as well. High school students are driving, connecting to wifi, and then going home.
Right.
Do we have the capability, you think, to make sure that every teacher that needs a Chromebook or a faster computer or whatever it might be? I guess we don't know that till we find out what their needs are.
We can do the hotspot, it's going to be the issue. I do not know a number. I can find out. I have no idea how many hotspots we have.
That's going to, that's going to require the teachers letting their principals know what they have.
And this will happen if, if we move forward.
Ask and they shall receive.
Yeah, if we move forward and say, "No teachers come to school after tomorrow," then there's going to be this, "We need twelve at this school." We'll know specifics then, because else, it'll be, they'll, they'll have to let us know.
Area directors meet with their principals every day at two, so this is something they will handle as well.
Do you think that gives them enough time tomorrow? I mean, tomorrow will be here, or should we curtail that with?
Technically, the order starts tonight, at twelve oh one, so I think the, the urgency is that, is to try to get these things wrapped up by tomorrow, no later than Monday.
And those calls. When you're trying to meet the needs of three thousand people.
Right.
Those calls that Kevin sends out too, to the parents, you know, just roll them, just roll them. This is your deadline. Roll them. And, and let us, let the parents, sometimes they might have to hear it twice, if they've, if they're working three jobs and trying to raise three kids.
Us direction on what we're doing.
So we have a consensus that Monday is the cutoff for Chromebook pickup.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
I'm sorry, Tuesday. Tuesday is the cutoff for Chromebook pickup. Um, where are we at with the administrator being on campus and their deeming their essential staff?
I, I think, I am fine if the administrator wants to be on campus. I'm not going to take that away from them. And if it's, if it's not, um, if it's just them.
When she doesn't need to be there, she doesn't need to be there.
They, they have the option.
I think, I think that we let them know that if they feel like they need to be there for a certain amount of time, then to use their discretion. I would like to give them some freedom and discretion. Because every school's different. Every school's a different size, has different, you know, student population.
But if they have to go like Monday, say, and Ms. McCall, that's just an example. If they have to go on Monday to, um, with either their IPC or their receptions or their secretary to get packets made, or whatever it is that y'all are talking about, then, um, they don't, there might not be a reason to go the rest of the week. Put the packets out front, let the parents drive by and pick them up.
Most of them are doing that now. I mean, most.
And go home and be gone, home the rest of the week.
Correct.
And I, I, yeah, but I don't want to take that freedom away if they need to.
If they need to be there, yeah.
Just, I don't want to do that. I mean, they know their school, they know their teachers.
I don't want to give them the freedom to force someone else to come. If they want to come, that's fine, but they don't, they should not be able to force someone else to come.
They can't. They can't force anybody to come.
She said bring an essential person.
No, no, no. They can reach out to that essential person, say, "Hey, if you, are you, can you?" If you can't, that's fine. That's.
The principal wants to be there, by golly, she can sleep there as far as I'm concerned, but I don't think she needs to bring much.
Example I gave earlier was the bookkeeper. Hey, can you come give parents money about, "Okay, I'm coming in on Wednesday. Let's make sh-" That's when I'm.
Can't she not do it at home?
I don't think so.
Can she not take the checkbook at home and write a check?
I think we've got some security pieces on that where it has to be in school. I mean, our software, I believe. I'm not, and I'm speaking out of turn to say that, but I don't think they can do that at home. IPCs can do their stuff at home, but I don't believe bookkeepers can.
No.
Well, if they can, they can, if they can do it. If they can figure out a way to do it.
Or if they don't want to come in and just.
Maybe they know stuff we don't know how to do it.
So do we have a consensus that the principals can bring, can go on campus with their essential staff, limited?
Their essential staff wants to come or she?
If they, if they want to come, that, we haven't taken that, that option away from them. Um, they still have the option to come, the principals and their essential, and it needs to be a minute, small number of people on campus.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to limit that number wherever we come.
So then the cleaning people have to come every night to that school. If she decides to come five days because she wants to come sit in her desk, then, um, somebody has to come clean her school every night.
She can clean her own.
Yeah, that's what's happening.
But that's what she wants to do.
That's what's happening right now. A lot of the principals clean their own stuff right now.
Because they know what they touched. They know where they went to the bathroom.
We keep saying she, he, she or he could clean their own.
Yeah, I'm not all about gender. I'm fine with everybody's the same. I don't care.
They could clean their own, but as long as we put, we give them the stuff that they can clean, let them clean their own. If they're just going in that one area, their one bathroom, let them handle that. But those other areas, those classrooms, um, custodians go in, clean it, fog it, whatever, seal that room up. Put some, and, and, and let them know that you will not go back on campus and go into that room once it's disinfected and sanitized. Seal the room. That way we know that room is COVID-free. And when the kids do go back, that room has been already done. But we, we just keep opening them up. We're just keeping this.
And then we're exposing our janitors and everybody. We call them custodians, I guess, today.
I'm part of this too, you know, it's, it's, it's an evolving process, and we're trying to have that urgency to get this right. And each time we think we've got a, a plan in place, then, then something else gets handed down, and, and then it, it creates another, another shift. So, you know, we're, we're.
I think the medical people now have kind of spoken, like, we got to get this under control. But this is now at the medical level. It's not.
The thing with this.
It's in a different hands now.
People shouldn't be running out for milk every day to.
And the thing with this is, this has given us an opportunity to catch up with a bunch of stuff as far as these facilities, and making sure these facilities are adequately cleaned.
Right, so we don't have a resurgence.
Right, because a lot of times, stuff comes back because it was never done right, so we need to take care of that.
So what I'm hearing is principals can come if they want.
And administrator.
They can bring, or an administrator. And so maybe the AP wants to come this Monday, and maybe next week the principal wants to come, but they do not have to go and sit there and stare at their walls the rest of the week.
Neither do any other employees. They, if they, "Hey, I'd like for you to come," fine. If you don't want to come, do it from home, or don't come at all.
And if there's any way that they can make copies, do bookkeeping or whatever at home, then they can do it at home. I think that works.
Do you have a consensus on that?
But no teachers on campus after tomorrow.
But no teachers.
And I, I agree with that. I think cleaning those rooms, keeping those doors locked, and if we can provide what our teachers need, um, to teach our kids at home, I'm, I'm very comfortable with that.
Can we charge Mr. Leopard, his folk, put something on the door to seal it, tape it, something?
Can I just, uh, just say what a deep clean is? Because we're, that's, when I think of a deep clean, I think it's a spotless place. That's not what they mean by deep cleaning.
Yeah, educated yesterday on that.
Yeah, that is a fogger or something that sanitizes the room, which means it's rid of that, those germs. It doesn't mean the floors have been stripped and waxed like we think when we come out the first day of school. It is not that. It is sprayed and all that, all the germs are gone. It is not deep clean like you and I would think we do our houses. So I did want to say that publicly, so we do know.
But with this time, they can clean and fog.
And get it off, right.
They can go it off.
We're going to clean, we're going to sanitize it first, and then we're going to come back and.
Right.
I know, they clean, they do the, they do the floors, and they do all that in the summertime. I mean, that's common. They don't need to do it now, and then again in a month, do it again. As long as it's germ-free, that's the main thing, because nobody may come back in May. So, and they, and they spend the summer, that's their normal routine, a summer is cleaning it. Right now, dust is not the problem. The virus is the problem. If they can disinfect it, then we can live with a little dust.
Okay, so we have a consensus on that?
It's, it's pretty cool, because, you know, there's a lot of administrators that already have a, a plan, and we're just trying to hear what everybody's plan is, you know? I'm hearing things like each grade level submits electronically a standards-aligned packet each Monday to administration. They're packed, they're copied, they're placed outside at the front office. Those teachers aren't coming to school, and administrators don't interact with parents. It's there for them to drive and, and get, so.
And parents have a window to get the Chromebooks, like Ms. McCall said, we got that window, and.
And I'm also hearing that principals are, are answering the phones, answering, helping parents navigate through, uh, homework and helping them with that as well.
I was at school today, and I heard the principal, I heard the principal on the phone for twenty minutes just telling the parent how to get online to get there.
And there should, and isn't there a way that, that the whole thing is to help them work at home? If we can move the, if we can put the phone numbers to the house, then they can still work from home the rest of the week, when the principal's not there on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, for that parent who can't get on the portal. Because I even, when I called Dade County, they even have, "You're having a problem getting on with the portal? Punch four," or whatever. I started to punch it just to see what they said. So they, we just might need to get on there and listen and see what they're doing.
So I think one of the things, one of the things we need to do is, uh, educate our folk on how to get all that stuff forwarded to their, their numbers.
That would be great.
Since they are working at home, because let's remember.
Because they are working at home.
They are working at home.
They're not off.
They're working at home, because we're still paying them. And if they're working at home, then they need to be accessible during those work hours.
Exactly.
They need to be able to pick up their phone and answer the phone.
Because if a parent calls and, like, and she wants to know how to get her child in, and she, um, punches four for guidance at Forest High School, not Forest High School, but let's say Fezzington Elementary, four for guidance is going to go into that guidance lady's office at home, is what I'm saying to her cell phone. Okay?
So this is a way that.
That'd work.
Um, we, we agree that there will still be packets.
Because they're not on vacation, they are working.
There will still be packets that the schools will handle and put outside the door.
Be interesting to see how many are getting picked up too. That's what I want to know, if it's. I want to know how many is getting picked up.
Can I ask a question? Now, the assignments that are online that teachers are giving, students are getting graded on that, is that correct? What about the packets? Are the students being graded when they turn, take a picture, or?
Here's what I heard, that they can snap a picture and send it to the teacher.
So, but are they to be graded, and if they don't turn it in, do they get a zero?
We're, we're not giving zeros.[1717.02]
Okay.
Just not right now. We're not in a place to be. We're, we're worried about the health and well-being of the students.
And I think, and I think what should be happening is, as you just said, they should be able to snap a picture if they have access, they have the availability to snap a picture and get it back.
Of course, the families are running around with cell phones. I see them all over the place.
Yeah.
With lots of data, because they're all on Facebook chat and whatever y'all call, all that stuff.
Okay.
I'm not real far sorry, feel very sorry about people not having data.
Okay, so we do have the, we are consensus that principals will be on campus, and their essential staff optional. No teachers. Rooms will be sealed. Rooms will be cleaned, then sealed.
Did we clarify the last day teachers can be on campus? That would be.
We're going to be, the urgency piece is going to be tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
We, we can't drag that out. We need to, but, and, and we have to give them tomorrow to go get their stuff. But after tomorrow.
Do you have a consensus on that?
Yes. And we want to empower everybody to be able to be as productive as is possible at home, because they're agonizing about that. So if we're going to not let them have the capability to work from school, then, then they've got to have as many options as possible to do a good job from home.
Thank you.
And you can be very productive working from home. Of course, from home.
Yeah, just ask my husband.
What else, Dr. Grant, help me?
What about over there, and the, what about our administrative people in the fishbowl? What's happening over there?
They're all, a lot of, most of those folks are staying or coming, you know, a lot of them are staying home because they had some autoimmune disorders that we have, and spread out. There's less than 10 in that room. I think there's four, and I don't go over there every day anymore, but.
Staggered work schedule, too.
And they're staggering when they come in. And, for example, one person came in Monday, Tuesday, then her counterpart came in Wednesday and Thursday, and then nobody's coming in Friday. So they're, you know, we're paying attention to the numbers.
Then we also have to take into consideration our district folk as far as them coming to work as well. How are we going to deal with that?
As much of them that can work at home as absolutely possible.
Yeah, what I've been telling people is if you have to have a meeting with less than 10, or a Zoom meeting, come do it in the morning, get your stuff done, go home, and flip it. If you're, if you want to come in the afternoon, whatever, we're being very aware of their situations.
And they, as far as having meetings, can't they Zoom, like?
Yeah, we're Zooming.
It's good, most of my meetings.
I've been Zooming with, you know, the principals. I have one of them, and there's over 150 people on that, and APs Monday, and it works well.
Have we always done that, or is that something new, the Zoom?
We've had the ability to do that. I've done that in some other places.
Look how much time it saves, because they don't have to get in a car and drive to the district office and.
Some of the stuff we're doing is going to change a lot of things we do in education.
I think so, too, because look how much.
It's easy to call a meeting like that, and you get 200 people there in 15 minutes.
And the principal still gets to be at their office if they're needed.
Right.
And they're not en route between North Marion and.
Well, I think for students, too, we're going to change the way of work and how we educate children because of all, we're forced to do this now.
I saw Florida Virtual's making 400,000 openings.
Yep.
Okay.
And they expect to use a lot of them next fall.
So with that being said, the other issue that's going to come up is not coming up, we have to know that the feeding is still going to continue. We're still going to do the grab-and-go meals for our students. I'm thinking it may, would change a little.
We talked about that this morning, and we're still working through that. Ms. Johnson's working right now.
Well, I did get some communication. One can't happen.
Yeah, we got some information from other districts. They were doing a one-time-a-week, so we kind of tasked her to do that, and she told us.
It can't happen.
Can't happen, but we're still not done with the can't happen, but as of this meeting now, we can't pull it off once a week.
Right.
Again, that's less people coming in contact with. Makes a ton of sense. Other, I think Broward, Miami Dade are doing it, but.
What are they giving them?
A lot.
Something, it was, it was frozen, but then, then again, I raised the question.
What if they unfreeze it?
My, I raised the question is, what about a kid that doesn't have the ability, they don't have a microwave in their home, or whatever? I'm, I'm trying to think broader.
What if it freezes and goes bad?
Exactly. So as of this afternoon, the last communication I got is that we're going to continue doing what we've been doing with the grab-and-go meals to make sure those kids are getting their food.
So how do they do that? They, do they have a timeline that there's, the parents are supposed to be there by? Because they probably need to get that.
They, that, the timeline is, is out there, is out there on the, on the website. People have been posting on Facebook, so it's out there. Parents can go to any location and pick up a bag, a grab-and-go meal. They do not have to, the kids do not, no longer have to be in the car.
They just have to show ID.
They just have to show ID, and that's, that's even rough, too, but we, we're going to be in compliance with what, what the rule is. So a grandparent can pick up.
Doesn't have to be American public.
Doesn't have to be, it does, can be any kid, so we just, we're trying to make sure the kids are getting fed.
And this will change the backpack program that we're doing, because the school sites are the distribution for that. So we need to, I, I'll have some conversations with Carla.
Right.
We just dropped off, thank you, Reverend Cummings, huge amounts today, all of that.
For two weeks.
For two weeks, so.
That's great.
Getting well, but now getting the word out. So we'll kind of, I'll, I'll think through that a little bit.
The next, the next point of this is taking care of our staff. We got a staff that's going to be out, that are not working, or that are not here. We need to make the decision that we're going to take care of our folk and pay them throughout this timeframe.
Yeah, everything goes on, yeah.
Yeah.
I just had a text from a teacher. They have students online until 2 o'clock tomorrow, so are they going to be able to get in?
We'll be very flexible.
To their classrooms after 2?
We'll communicate that tomorrow morning.
Okay, we need to be sure that they can get into their classrooms.
Yeah, we're going to be very flexible tomorrow.
Okay.
Should we move it to Monday for the teachers?
I'm just, so I'm just thinking of safety thing, Stacy, so that gives me Saturday and Sunday to go get it, and then bring it back Monday. That's three days. If, if we're doing urgency, we'll just stay as late as we need to tomorrow night to pull it off.
Okay.
We can have the principals check off that they talk to every teacher, they have what they need.
Okay.
And if that means we have to work, or we have to go to a school, we'll just go figure it out.
Well, if something really weird happens, like I said, there's always.
Always an outlier, right. When, if a teacher's not there tomorrow, we can figure it out, because we have that principal on campus.
Individually take care of that situation.
Right. Because their rooms aren't going to be sanitized.
We need to understand the urgency of the governor's order, and we, we really need it.
But I mean, somebody might really be sick, or might really be in the hospital today.
I know for certain there is somebody in the hospital today, very, very, very ill, and that we just are not aware of everything that's out there yet. But I do, I've been receiving a few texts, too, and they have some really good points. One, actually, it was a couple that I heard, their suggestion, maybe from teachers, not maybe, it is, is maybe one person at the district level do the packets as they did before and put those out. That way, it's just one office, one person, they can distribute those packets, however, because teachers may not have the internet access at home, and that makes things very confusing.
What I was, what I was saying, Miss, we're going to do that, and if there's four, we're going to have like a kindergarten packet and a first grade packet.
Okay, so someone at the district level will do that.
X team will, will pull that off.
I just got a text message that the packets don't come back to the school, Ms. McCall.
I, I did, too, but we're not going to get into that.
That's not what we said.
They don't come back to the school.
No, no, we said, if, we need to have something generically, that if we can't make contact, that we have, that we will give out to a parent.
All teachers, all teachers do not have access to internet to make, and create packets.
The example I gave was if a teacher couldn't, and if a student couldn't, we'll have something that we can give.
Well, that we have a supplemental.
Yeah, we'll have a.
Okay, so that is, that is something that they can use and go to that route.
Ange, and, and you're right, Miss Stacy, it does not come back in, because you're bringing those germs back. Everything goes out.
We're sitting here, though, having this discussion about how we were going to get back to Ms. Ms. Box. Well, they don't go back to Ms. Ms. Box.
It's not going.
No, it does, so, no, it goes into a box that a parent comes and grabs, but it doesn't ever come back to Ms. Ms. Box.
Oh, they may not do, okay.
But they'll have access to it, but it's not to.
Yes, we're taking the pictures.
Okay, another recommendation, and I think this is a very good one. I think all teachers should have to turn in their keys tomorrow, or whatever, because we know that teachers can get in their classrooms, and it may be sealed or not. They'll still enter their classroom if they can, so I think that's probably a very good recommendation, that when the teachers come, they need to drop off their keys somehow.
Such as the last day of school.
Such as the last day of school, collect those keys, and then, and cut off that access, because teachers, I mean, they're clever, they're smart. I thought that was a very good.
I agree with that, because that's, that keeps them from going back into those rooms.
Yep. And I also need.
We all have moments of insanity.
Well, I mean, everybody, you know what? Teachers are very compassionate. I mean, they, they will, teachers will do anything, anything for their students and their community. And, and they just, you can't stop them. So that is a very good way to stop that, just, you know, for this next bit. And then also looking out for our district employees. They are, they are home, correct, except for maybe the one that's making the packets?
So we came up with an essential group after yesterday. So Mr. McAtter and I, Ms. Whitehouse said, like, 12 people, 15 people, what do they need to do? So I'm going to be here. If someone needs me to go to school, I'll go. There's people like that that are around the district to help.
Okay, because I'm, I'm hearing, I think, majority of the district. I, I just think we need to do what's right and what's best for everybody, and, and have them be home. That is the best way to stop.
I'll give you a specific district program coordinators that write the content. They're already at home. Ms. Beck's saying, hey, I need you to do this. They're doing it, they're shooting it back and forth. They're, so they haven't been here, so they're not coming.
Yeah.
Program specialists.
Program specialists, I'm sorry, program specialists.
And then.
Because everybody is working, so if the phones are routed to their house, to their phone, then boom, 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 they're going to be, they'll be just like they're sitting at the school.
Yeah. And then I, can I talk about ESC for a moment, too, since we're all here, and this is our time? I think on our ESC departments and stuff, there, because it's new, there's a lot of packets and things that are required to be turned in by tomorrow. I think our ESC folks at this point are pulling out their hair. They're trying their best, but it hasn't been compatible. It's, there's some quirks in there, and I, I think we probably need to do a better job with listening to what their needs are. I hear something about an Adobe. Yeah, and so they're being sent, and then it's not working, and it's, it's, they're frustrated.
I'll go to your home computer, so.
Yeah, and then I guess.
I'll check on that and see. I'll tell you, too, we're still, no one's told us that we still don't have to meet our compliance with ESC requirements, so we're, so we had to actually tell folks, you can't go to that person's house to do their IEP, which was, they were wanting to go in, and I was like, no, 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 you can't. So we've been on the opposite of that, telling teachers, you got to protect yourself. ESC specialists can't do that. So just shoot me that, Ms. King, and I'll take care of that.
Okay. So anyways, I think there's the ESC packets on Friday, maybe talk to.
I'll find out.
Find out about that, okay. My phone is blowing up.
Elena, I hope you're taking your notes over there.
Does IEP meetings have been done by phone in the past, if a parent hasn't been able to come in physically?
She means the distance learning logs that are due Friday.
Okay.
Well, maybe, listen, just listen. I think there's a lot of frustration, and we're not going to have all the answers today. We're not going to have them next week's and two weeks. And, and again, this is just a learning process. We need to all just gracefully learn from this. But again, the most important thing we can do is just to be home. That is the protection and the safety and the well-being for everybody involved. Not that education is not important. It is extremely important.
But living's important, too.
But living's the most important. And we can, and, and you know, in 30 days from now, depending what's going to happen, and we don't know, you know, we're going to know a lot more than, and be able to adapt and be flexible and adjust. But I, I just don't want us to be just so fixated on what we've always done in the past and going to our brick and mortar, or feeling like we have to meet certain criteria because we always have. We need to just, it is a new day. Just remember, be, give yourself grace and give that to others, too. I think I'm hearing a lot of people starting to build up a little bit, and people are getting frustrated, and we don't want that right now. We're, now we want everyone to be calm and be able to think clearly and do what's best. And this is all going to work out. I mean, I'm telling you right now, in a year from now, we're going to get through this, and it's going to be okay.
And we're going to be better.
And we are going to be so much better. But right now, just to put all these mandates and frustration on people.
I do want to apologize, because it's been ever-changing. It's changing. We said that. So I was so happy about the hybrid plan, Mr. O, everybody was excited, instructions going, and then it changed, just like, and it changed.
And like, even y'all having your meetings on Zoom, for years, I've talked to principals, and they're like, oh, I have to go to the district office, and then their, their, their staff's going, the principal's gone for three hours, because it takes him 45 minutes to get from North Marion all the way over here, and then he's at the office, and then he, and, and we got parents that are here, we got questions and stuff. Now, he doesn't have to do it that way. Now, he doesn't have to do it that way.
So we need to talk, though, about packets for our students with ESC, because they are individualized, so they are going to have to be mailed. Like, every packet at Hillcrest is individualized, as well as our students, you know, in, in regular schools. So those can't be the generic district packet.
Are there things that can be mailed?
We could, we could mail.
Mail what, the packets?
Packets.
Yeah.
To the parents?
Yeah.
What do we do in the summer when we're off for two and a half months? Do we send packets?
Because we have extended school year.
We have extended school year.
So they have, so what, what happens then, though? So they go into, into school? So they continue to go? Okay. Also.
And the people who need the packets are the kids who are getting summer school, and they're the kids, yeah, who have the 21st Century Grant in the summer. So they don't just go home for the summer and come back. We keep them in school. So that's a misnomer.
Also, from ESC, I'm hearing they need access to Opti-Optivue for IEPs.
King, if you'll tell, if you'll send me specifics, I will help however I can. Send me that, we can get after that tomorrow morning.
And we, and I'm sure everybody here is getting a ton of texts and stuff right now, all of us.
I'm getting stuff from principals, saying that I want to come to work.
I'm sitting there looking at it, me, too. And so we got to, we got to do what we need to do, and we need to keep moving.
We have to help people get over their guilt, too. I mean, it's, it's just, it's really, really hard to all of a sudden have your whole routine, your whole focus, all of your passion and enthusiasm, just.
But I don't want principals to go to work out of guilt either.
No, I'm not, that's exactly what I'm saying. We got to help them get over it.
Because they should show. I want them to go because they have to. They really need to, not, not because people, they might think people expect them to.
We have a great group of principals in this district. I don't think they're being guilty to do anything.
Dedicated, we have to help them.
I don't, I don't want them to think that, oh, this principal's going, and I should go. I want everybody to do what they need to do.
Everybody has their own unique situation. Nobody knows here whose medical conditions and who can't be here and stuff. Everybody has to deal with theirself on that, the issue. So I think by him giving that hybrid option, they're, they're able to make the decision for themselves on those.
Yeah, they still feel guilty, though. I had someone today say, I look at my principal's face, and I see she's worried for her children, she's worried for her teachers. I could go home, but I won't. Because I, because I'm telling you, teachers are the most caring and compassionate people.
But I don't want her here by herself.
Well, I do, and I do say every time, do what's best for you and your family. Take care. I had an AP that has four children, hasn't been there one day. She said, I'm not going. I can't, because I got to take care of my kids. Very thankful. So I know that guilt about having, wanting to come to work. We all probably have that. But I do tell them every time, do what's best for you.
And let me say this for the record. All, all of our administrators, you guys who are listening, we, we know y'all are watching. So listen, do what you need to do. Do it as fast as you need to do it, do it as accurately as you need to do, and go home. Get off of do it as fast as you need to do it, do it as accurately as you need to do, and go home, get off of campus, we can't say.
In our buildings.
And, and, yeah.
In our buildings, and that probably includes, like, what about, like, in here, like, our, our secretaries?
Staff, period.
Robin, Nicole.
What can they do at home? Are y'all working, what are y'all doing? So what can you do at home?
They should be.
They should be able to do it at home, too, just like everybody else.
They were given that opportunity, Mrs. Stacy.
Please don't yell at people.
Then please don't assume, Mrs. Stacy.
But you know what, I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to her, okay? You don't need to speak for her, she's an adult.
Oh, and I think she responded, Mrs. Stacy.
Well, you, you interrupted her.
Ladies.
No, I didn't, I interrupted you.
Ladies, ladies, that's not, that's not what we're here for, that's not, the question was asked, the question, the questions was asked, and Ms., Ms. Martinez Lopez answered the question, all staff have the option to not be here, that's the rule, district-wide, am I correct?
Yep.
If you do not feel comfortable working, nobody should be guilted or anything into feeling that they need to work. If you need to go home, go home and work from home, our, um, we have some different collective bargaining units, that stuff is gonna be worked out in the very near future, but let's face it, there are some jobs that cannot be done from the house. That's, that's just being straight up honest, can't cut the grass from the house, that's, that's, that has to be on site. But we're gonna work through all that as well, we've agreed, we've agreed, we've agreed, hold on, Mrs. Stacy, we've agreed that we're going to take care of our staff wages, we have a consensus on it, so that's on the record, that we're gonna take care of their salaries up to.
May one.
May one.
I look forward to calling a school, having it transferred to their home, like what happened with the legal department, I was very excited that they were home, and speaking to a guidance person somewhere, or Ms. Lopez or something, hi, oh, yeah, I'm working from home, great, I'll be so happy to hear that.
The process would be so seamless that if a person called, they wouldn't know that they were at home.
Oh, ask them.
Yeah.
I was so excited when that legal told me she was at home, I said, you're up at, you're up at the school, and she goes, no, I'm working from home, I, we re, see, I didn't know we could reroute the number, that's how I found out. She goes, no, they routed my number, I said, that is so cool, it was Kishla, actually, I was speaking to, that was Park and Terry, and like, wow, that is so cool, I didn't know we could do that, so.
And we need to make sure that we have, all schools, all schools have the same message, record, uh, in, in regards to the distribution of these Chromebooks.
We'll craft the message that each principal does for each site.
Okay, so the principal, you set that schedule, we're not taking your autonomy away, principals, as far as your distribution, but it has to be the same message. These Chromebooks are going out tomorrow, um, and until Tuesday.
And the end of business Tuesday.
It's, it's a wrap after that, okay, um, so please make sure that there's, there's one, one solid message.
Seven, we'll craft it, and we'll give it to the principal.
Okay, 'cause we don't want the parents, um, going backwards.
Will you do like a robo-call thing out?
Yes, ma'am, Skylar.
Okay, so we're good with administrators, who's on campus, taking keys, 'cause we got a lot of stuff, Elena, that we're talking about.
Yeah, I need that list quickly, Elena.
Taking keys, rooms being cleaned, rooms being sealed, um.
Well, not deep clean, like.
Sanitized.
And just.
Sanitized.
Sanitized.
Sanitized, whatever, I, I just don't want, I don't want no virus on, on the campuses.
Yes, sir.
Um, so that's gonna require, and, and we're saying this, 'cause the custodian staff's gonna know, you guys are gonna have to go in there at this time, so just know that.
Right, right, and, and with all sincerity, we're, we're empowering everyone in every way they can to stay safe and healthy, and be able to provide the education to the kids that they are missing so much, and the outreach to the parents that's so important, and that's that.
And all we can do is pray they all stay safe, and they all come back nice and healthy.
So Reverend Cummings, may I?
Yes, ma'am.
For those of you that have never worked at home, that are watching, I'm going to give you a couple of suggestions that you, that you treat your home just like your office when you are working, that you get up, you have your morning routine, you get dressed, and you go into your office, you take a break when your students take a break, just like you normally do, so just treat your home like your office, and it will take you some getting used to, but once you do that, it works very, very well. So don't be afraid of working at home, but you have to pretend, or not pretend, you have to make it like your office, just like going to school on a regular basis. Takes you a couple of days, but you will get it done.
I've worked from home my entire life.
And someone, for the record, someone asked a question, um, what happens when the keys get turned in? Keys get sanitized, too.
Well, you know what, these are one of those things you don't know until you say it, but it was like, someone's like, what if people are on quarantine? And I'm like, you know what, you're right, so maybe we just need to have a firm email to everybody to stay off campus and not worry about the keys, because if they do, they, they, well, not all schools, they can find ways, um, but, yeah.
If they're on quarantine.
And so you know what, yeah, so I'm like, maybe it sounded good in theory to take their keys if everyone's healthy, and it's the last day of school on the summer, but this.
But you're asking that one person to take care of everybody.
Yeah, and so maybe that, that probably may not be good, but if we give a good directive, someone sent me a good directive from USF, and basically what it says, if you need something from the office within the next thirty to sixty days, you have until tonight, now, we could do it whenever, to go and access it. It was, there's their directive.
That was my directive this morning.
It was clear, they have their timeline, and then that's good, and then probably let them keep their keys, 'cause that's, it sounded good in theory, but it probably is not. It could have those germs.
What else, Dr. Mayor?
Uh, we need to publicly explain pay, I know we mentioned it, but I don't think it was clear for the public and the board how we're handling paying folks through the month.
Yeah, so there's two things, FMLA's changed numerous times, and FMLA says, and Dewana sent me a, I'll, I'll pull it up, she sent me an email, kind of explained some things. We, FMLA extends ten days after, so if it, we, we said, uh, April sixteenth, it would extend the ten days. So if a, if an employee applied for FMLA, they were guaranteed ten days until May first, and something might change.
Can we go back, though?
Yes, ma'am.
Because apparently some board members don't know that we've been paying everybody, everybody, through, through the fifteenth.
And I do wanna say, again, and to, at no time will we come to you and ask, we're just not, we, y'all just said we're gonna pay folks.
Except the part-time extended.
We're gonna, yeah, right, yeah.
So we've been paying everybody through the fifteenth, and that was, and you were very clear about that the last time, um, and so that was whether they stayed at home, or came to work, or everybody, everybody was working at home.
Right.
And so that will then continue through.
Yes, ma'am.
Through May first, through April thir, May first?
April thirty-first, May first, we'll, whenever that official day is, we'll come back, and then it'll be totally different, and I do wanna talk about the after-school. We, Teresa had a great idea with Susan, they're asking, begging to come to work so they can get paid, so whereas the food service folks are not coming in, we've talked to the unions, and they agreed, we're gonna train them so they can actually deliver food, so they can come in and get paid. So we have a lot of those folks that are, we're trying to help them as best we can, and they're jumping, now, we'll tell you, we're fighting Publix, and we're fighting all the Dollar Generals and all that, that are paying seventeen bucks an hour, and we know seventeen dollars an hour, I mean, right out of the gates. We're, we're gonna lose some folks, and we're aware of that, but we're trying to take care of our people right now.
Wow, at least giving them the option, which is great.
Right.
So, Dr. Brantham, this is totally off that subject, but I just had a text from an ESC teacher, they want to know if they can take their desktop computers to their homes rather than using Chromebooks, and that might be a question for Mr. Clark.
We have, uh, it's called a hold harmless thing that you sign, that if you wanna take something home, so we can, we're gonna be extremely flexible.
Okay.
Extremely.
Can the bookkeeper do that, then?
I don't know because of the software feature, the hardware, yes, I don't know about the software, I have to, I don't know the answer to that, Ms. King. I don't know if it's something that has to be done, like onsite, I do not, I don't wanna speak on behalf of Teresa or money, I don't want ever, I don't know.
Right, right.
I will find out.
Just something for us to look into.
Yes, ma'am, and again, we're gonna be very flexible with our folks.
And, 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 and let's, let's go back, 'cause we just jumped, let's go back and explain that FMLA, and, and explain that there's a new type of FMLA, um, that was just passed.
Either, either way, we're gonna have to pay employees for ten days from, from our money, from our district money, general fund, have to come out of that. So what we're kinda proposing as of right now is let's just, instead of making an employee go through and file for FMLA to get, and Reverend Cummings, you and I had this conversation a lot about, do they, what if they don't know, we're still, no, but I will tell you, the way it works is gonna be different for, for, and I says, IU-PAT folks know that, they're gonna have to start coming and helping us do some stuff next week, they know that, that's gonna, that's coming, but however we slice it, or FMLA or not, our people are gonna get paid at least until May first, but everybody's being guaranteed as of right now till April sixteenth.
So, uh, let's, let's, um, give a little bit more background, so we had, we had taken care of our folks through the fifteenth, uh, 'cause that was the right thing to do. Everybody, every, all the full-time folks in Paris and MESP, MEA, IU-PAT, were paid, whether or not they were working. So teachers who were, you know, working to get all these great lessons, they were paid, um, folks who thought it was best, you know, that they work from home, like if they're an HVAC person, but they feel the need to work at home, they're getting paid, too, so that was through the fifteenth. With, uh, and we came up with that just prior to, um, all of this going down, so April first, FMLA changed, and, and you know that as well, where if you claim, um, if you have a COVID issue, you get ten days, and the district pays that, we would pay that. So we could, um, ask folks from the sixteenth to the first, uh, you know, we understand you may have an issue with COVID, and that would be like, your school is closed, um, daycare is closed, you would be covered under this new one, um, to fill out the paperwork. But in talking with the group, as, as we do daily, um, and Reverend Cummings was there this morning, as we're hashing it out, to ask, which we figure it would be thousands of folks, to, to do that piece of paper, um, to get the message out to them about it, to educate them, to have them do the paper, to get the paper back, and how do we get paper back when we shouldn't be touching paper, to have Dewana, Gary, and one other person do all that paperwork, in the end, it's just best just take care of our folks, and so that's, that's where we're coming from, is that what we have in place, what we said would be in place through the fifteenth will now be in place to the end of the month.
Right. So to go in a little more detail about it, as Superintendent said, Reverend Cummings said, we need everybody to have a Moodle or some kind of training that they have received this knowledge about FMLA, so that we will pay for ten days, and that requires Dewana and her folks to get stuff, has, it requires pay, so I called Dewana, said, if I apply for that, how long will it take me? It'll take you thirty minutes to fill out the application, then how long will it take your, it takes my folks fifteen to get it in, so we just smoked forty-five minutes, if we're going to pay our employees anyway, just pay our employees, so that gets it, so we're gonna continue to do what we're doing until May one versus all this FMLA stuff that we're doing, and then May first, it will be totally different.
And Dewana agreed it was the right thing to do.
Absolutely, she said, it just, one way.
Goes past that.
We have to come back and have a conversation, but it's coming out the same, it's the same money that we would've paid them anyway for the salary, so.
Yeah, you're just not asking the employee to fill out the paperwork and us process the paperwork, we're gonna pay, and it's only ten days, we're gonna take care of our folks now, until May first as of April second, right, until something changes, but that's the plan as of tonight.
Right, and so, and for the board also, because if Elena, Robin, and Nicole can be working from home, there's not gonna be people up here to help us either, we're gonna be on the phone, there's no sense, these doors are locked, right, they're gonna always lock this front door, right now?
Yes, ma'am.
So we have, do, and we, are we gonna keep the operator, or are we gonna, what are we gonna?
Those have been routed.
They've been routed out already.
Oh, great, okay, so they really could, if, if, if they can, if those three can work at home, then we really won't have much going on down here, and they really should, if at all poss, like, anything you can do at home, I want to encourage you to do it at home.
It's gonna be a ghost town, Mrs. Stacy, for a little bit.
Good, and it, it has to be.
Right, it will be.
It has to be.
Right, because, um, the board, I believe the board has made it clear that we don't want anyone told they can't work from home.
Right.
I think we've told everybody they could.
That they could, I mean, that they couldn't work from home.
What else, what else you got, Dr.?
Okay, that, that's great.
You have anything, it's Dr. Brantham?
No, sir, I'm good, you tell me what you need.
Dr. Mayor, you good?
Just that ESC, as usual, is gonna have to be different with our really profound kids, because those packets are individualized, very, highly individualized, and we don't wanna have to be in a position where we're having to provide compensatory services down the road.
But they're used to doing that, 'cause they do it all summer anyway, don't they? Like you said, they kinda, those, those.
There are kids that require, uh, education through the summer that's on their IEP, so they come in, so that there's never more than a ten-day break in service. When you have more than a ten-day break in service, then you're looking at having to provide.
So that might be something they really have to get.
Right, and I have confidence that our ESC department will get on that, but there's going to be printing and assembling that's gonna need to be done by somebody to be able to honor those IEPs, but that's a very, it's not, well, it's bigger than we wish it was, number of students, but that'll just be something to, to problem-solve, you know, we're not gonna get all this problem solved tonight, but we've made some good progress.
Um, any, any other things that we hadn't talked about that concern?
What about our meetings?
Um, that's a great question, Ms. McCall.
I mean, I, you know, we've got all these important meetings coming up, I'm not comfortable doing those all remotely.
I'm not either.
What's wrong with what we're doing now?
I think we're fine doing what we're doing now.
I do, too.
Everybody's comfortable with it.
I'm perfectly fine with it.
So that does require people to come in?
Well, what if there was remote, somebody's gonna have to come in and figure out how to do it remotely, too, so.
But these are going to be as needed, um, we have some already scheduled that we need to continue go through with, okay?
Like, if someone comes in, it's not, they have to be here all day, I mean, come in for the meeting and go home, just like we did.
Well, there's obviously a certain amount of prep work that needs to be done and what have you, you know, but we're, I think that the message is clear that we are trying to minimize as much as we possibly can.
And I, I.
And still run the district, there's still business that has to be done.
To, as much as possible, um, keep our agendas streamlined as far down as we can, which she has been doing, um, as well as our work sessions.
Should we reevaluate our work session, I mean, again, because people are gonna have to be here and work on that, and right now, what we're trying to do is minimize exposing people. Can we look at that again, is there anything we can wait until May, I mean, I know it sounded important last week, but is it?
Is it life, is it life or death? Like, some of the stuff that's on there, what do you think, Ms. McCall?
You have the charter school presentation, uh, they were gonna Zoom in, um, and there were some other time-sensitive items on April ninth, but I'm gonna say, too, that if you're not allowing teachers to go into a classroom by themselves, why, why can't you all Zoom for these meetings? I, I don't understand.
It would have to be advertised virtual.
Right.
Well, I'm not comfortable on the eighth doing that in a Zoom, we already have to Zoom.
Right.
And the meeting on the ninth, at this time, cannot be advertised differently, don't have any time.
Okay, so.
We wanna Zoom as much as we can, but if it's something that really requires us, that's, that's why we get the big bucks.
Yep.
And we maintain our social distance, and if it's something that we really feel is critical, we're, let's face it, ninety-three percent is lost in the translation if, if you don't get to see people.
And does it really matter if we're on TV, if we could be video, like, if it was on tape or something, I mean, to put, be, less people coming in here to te, televise, is that much more difficult to televise than just put on?
Audio.
Just, 'cause our board meetings used to just be.
Right, audio.
Audio.
Would it reduce the number of staff to do, to go to just audio versus vis, AV?
People think, the audio people are right in here with us, the audio people are.
See, I don't know what.
But I think if, if you start, because of the sensitivity of, of even the meetings now being, being closed mostly, that you're, if you're gonna take that public access away from watching it on video, I don't think that's a wise thing.
I think we need to continue the transparency.
I just didn't know if it was that much more complicated for the staff to.
And, and the audio people are likely the visual people as well, correct?
Then I would say, as a member of the public, what are you trying to hide if all of a sudden you don't want things visual?
I just don't, I just wanna, yeah, it's nothing about.
I'm not, I'm not about. If it takes ten people to do it visually, and, and three people to do it audio, it's something to just talk about.
Or you could Zoom.
I think Mr. Christian, and I talked with him on it, it's minimal people, um, I think we continue to go the way that we're going.
I think I like that.
And that way, we, we don't want to give any public perception that we're doing anything differently, and they can see it, um, public trust as well, so, um, and then Mr. Christian.
We've done differently, as we reorganized our setting, our seating.
How much difference has involved, Mr. Christian, in doing televised versus, versus audio, like, is it like?
For the last year or so, we've been at the point where we can do this with two people.
Okay, that's.
There are two people behind that wall right now, so.
Okay, okay, that's, that's what I wanted to know, thank you.
So let's continue the way that we're doing it, we just wanna streamline those agendas as much as we can, if it's not a necessity, that's.
About to take care of it.
And, and move through these meetings as expeditiously as we can to handle the business, business still has to be conducted in this district.
'Cause we're gonna come out of this, and then we don't wanna be reacting to everything, we wanna be able to get as much business done as we can, and then when we're all back up and running, there won't be as much catch-up.
Okay, um, I'm gonna move to board concerns and comments, um, attorney?
No, thank you.
Elena, Dr. Mayor?
Yes, I think, um, Officer Woods, thanks for being here tonight, appreciate you, you're in a different spot, so the camera needs to swing this way, but thank you, thanks for being here. I think it's important for all of us to remember that, um, this coming Wednesday is Passover, uh, next Sunday is Easter, and I consider myself a realist, I believe in miracles, and this is the season of miracles, and I continue to pray for a miracle, and I believe, I believe one is coming, but even if we do not get that miracle, um, he is still my God, and a reminder to all of us that we may not get a miracle, we may be the miracle, so with that message in our heart, I wish all of you a, a great, uh, week, um, a safe week, and, uh, happy, happy Passover, happy Easter, whatever you may celebrate.
Thank you, Dr. Mayor, Ms. McCall?
Yep, I'm good, I guess everybody stays safe.
Ms. Stacy?
Yep.
With the skip, Ms. Strower.
I'll, I'll come back there, Ms. King?
I just wanna echo also for everyone to just, uh, stay safe, I wanna thank our teachers and our administrators and, um, our district East people, you guys have rose to the occasion, and as a board member, I, I can speak for everyone on this board, we recognize your hard work, we recognize your hard work and dedication, and we are so grateful for each and every one of you. I hope everyone heard the board loud and clear today, we understand you're compassionate and dedicated and love our children more than anything, but please listen to us and, and take advantage of us saying, please do not feel obligated to go to your schools and your classrooms at this time, or your place of work unless it is completely necessary, that is what this board has told you today, so I, I just wanted to say that I hope that you guys please just heed that, just heed what you're hearing on the TV, you're hearing, the best thing you can do right now is to stay home. Staying home truly saves lives, as much, and when we're social, we are the most social probably profession there may be, and, and I understand, you know, that, but right now, the best thing you can do is stay home, save lives, take care of your family and you, and we'll regroup, and we will be stronger and better for this, and we're gonna learn along the way, and I just think each and every one of you for that.
Can I say something? I wanna thank Kelly King, but she put it so wonderful, um, because we know how teachers, teachers and educators are cut from a very unique piece of cloth, and we know that you love your kids, but this board loves you, and we want you to take care of yourselves.
Thank you, thank you, ladies, Ms. Athmore?
Yes, yes, and echoing both Ms. Stacy and, and Ms. King and, and Ms. McCall, we want nothing more than for every single one of our dedicated employees to return to us when, when this is all over with, so take good care of yourselves and, um, do what you know.
So take good care of yourselves and do what you know is, is right. And it's going to help you stay, stay healthy and, and ready to come back, because we'll be ready for you. I just have two things, and, and the first one, I guess it starts, I need a clarification. Did we have a, a special school board meeting the other day? Or did we have a special work session the other day?
Um, and I'm getting ready to come back and address something that I said, and try to correct something. It was a work session. It was not a school board session. It, it was not a school board meeting. As a matter of fact, while you're there, on the 31st, it was a special administrative briefing and work session that invariably voted to move, we voted to move forward with selecting the interview and the three top superintendent candidates. For the record, the school board cannot take formal action at a work session. So that was not a vote. That was a consensus to move forward. Although the minutes for that meeting reflect board consensus discussion had taken place about the board voting on that topic. So I hereby raise up this, that issue again and ask the board for consensus to move forward with the selection and interviews of the top three superintendent candidates discussed at the March 31st, 2020 work session.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Because I, I definitely want to move forward with, with the interviews. It's essential. But it did, it does now give me the opportunity. I wouldn't have been able to bring it up again because the, the dissenter doesn't get to do that, right? To ask for a recon, for reconsider. But since it's okay to talk about it, I really would like us to reconsider interviewing four. And here's my rationale, it's very simple. We've got two candidates with superintendent experience and one candidate without superintendent experience. And I think it would be good to have two apples and two oranges for comparison. And I'm sure all of you had more time to do more research, and I know I certainly did. And when I see a candidate that has such a strong track record of, of not only longevity, but also success and a very solid, clean reputation, to the point where their own superintendent is saying, you know, they've done this, they've done this, they've done this, they're, they're ready to fly. I think that it would be very important to give that person the opportunity to come before us. Then we'll have four. And if we don't see what we feel like we need to see to make a decision, then we can regroup. But when something keeps coming up in my mind, I always regret it if I don't bring it back forward. So I would very much like to have, I think of assistant coaches, you know? They've done so many different jobs, and then when they get to be a head coach, a lot of them, their first year, they're winners. And if we're going to interview one assistant superintendent, I think we should interview two for the contrast, just like we're going to do two supers. So I hope I can get consensus on that.
Any discussion?
I think we have a very passionate board member. And I hear you. I hear her.
And I, I, I'm telling you, Nancy Thrower, you wear us down.
Sorry.
Wear us down. And so I'm willing to go with you.
Thank you, I appreciate that very much.
Ms. McCall?
Well, my only concern about it is.
Two right behind.
There's two others that are right there too. And I, I just, I, I feel very strongly that, that we had three, that there was a very widespread before the next score. And if we're going to interview that person, I almost feel like, well.
Five.
Those were so close. And I, I really don't want to go down that road. I, I'm comfortable where we are. I, I accept her passion and I understand, but I, but I really, I'm very comfortable with the decision that we made, with the consensus that we came up with.
I'm, okay, Ms. Thrower, I'm a softie sometimes, and, you know, Ms. McCall's sometimes tougher than I am. And I think I agree with you, Ms. McCall, that we do have to say where we stop. We always, we always, if we don't find what we're looking for, we can go to the fourth person.
Well, and I'm thinking in terms of practicality too. You know, we're giving two folks with superintendent experience a chance to, to sh- to show who they are. And then is that really fair to the one that doesn't, you know, without having an offset? And.
But I think there was something else about that person that we saw.
I think there was the fact that the other three have their doctorates, but, you know, I don't have my doctorate. I don't know if anyone sitting up here has their doctorate. And so to me, that shouldn't be a, a make it or break it thing, you know? When, what keeps standing out to me is also two. That the one that we already decided to interview has only had two areas of experience as a deputy. This one that we're passing by has three. So again, what, to, to have four, two and two, we don't see what we want to see, then we open it up. Because when we go too far back, now we're getting into folks that don't have any superintendent or assistant superintendent level experience.
Ms. King?
You want me to talk again? Well, I can talk some more if we'd like. Oh, well, I agree with everybody, I think, on this one. I think you have some very valid points.
Got a lot of.
The only thing is, is there, there was a wide gap. There was a very wide gap, and so I almost.
But he did end up number four. So it's not like I'm saying, let's skip and do five. That would be wrong, to skip over four. We're doing one, two, three, four. Boom. Two with experience, two not.
Well, Mr. Cummings, you're the swing vote.
Frank, I think, I, I, we looked at it. We, we kind of, we were the ones that rated these guys, these candidates. And however that gap came up is based on what we wrote down, correct? So I'm, I'm inclined to go where we are, to stay where we are, deal with the three. And if something should happen and we have to go to four, we go to four. We're not, I don't want to put us through any trauma or anything of making it look like we don't, we're not doing our due diligence in, in these matters. I think that we, we all saw the same information at the same time. And let me say this for the record, because I know people, people were saying, oh, you guys were given six minutes to make a decision on that. For the record, everyone, we were not given six minutes to make a decision. We looked at those things. We looked at that information. And it was, you saw six minutes on TV, but we saw the information.
So Reverend Cummings, can you clarify that? That Ray and Associates actually called each of us individually?
Correct.
And we had the information prior.
Prior to the meeting.
And, and hopefully, we all did our homework.
Correct. That is correct. So I don't want to, I don't, and, and many of the things that people have texted us and emailed us, we were already aware of. So please don't think that it was a knee-jerk decision. And that spread between three to four was just a huge gap. It was clear. So I would prefer we continue where we are and then go forward from there. And then if things come out a little bit differently, then we, we have that option. We, we don't have to be in a rush to do this, let me say that. We don't have to be in a rush. We put a timetable out there, but in looking at this and continuing to look at this, and I'm glad you brought it up, because I had something I had already talked to Ray and Associates about. There is a component that was kind of missing in this whole thing was kind of having some more community input on these, these candidates. So I want to pass this out to you right now while I'm thinking about it, because I'll be done closing the meeting without. This is a form, this is, has to be tweaked, I'll give you that. But this is something that Ray and Associates kind of come out. After we have interviewed them, the candidates, there'll be a period where if we want, we can have individual conversations with the candidates. But we also said that we wanted this to have very much transparency with the public, with our community. They were, came in when we did our community meetings and bringing it in. So we want to actually kind of, kind of like a survey, put out there to the public. Let them see what they, let them give us what they saw on the candidates that we are in the top three or whatever they are. And get these back and before we make a final decision on anything. This came from Ray and Associates. They would tweak these to fit, but this is a recommendation from them. So are you guys?
Now, the only problem is when you start doing something by large committee rule, you know, form this huge group, we could get so many things and then end up. I believe we were elected by the people to make this decision. And we weren't elected that by proxy. Other people would tell us how we should see things. And we are reelected, if we seek reelection, by the decisions that we make. And if we are drawn one way or another by, I mean, the, the, one person in the community says, is it, should it just cause an uproar in the community? Drag things out? And we could have our candidates say, forget it, I'm not going there. There's too much dissension in that community. I don't know that we need to bring in a whole storm of people to scare our candidates away, to wonder what they're walking into. Does the school board do their job or do they not? And that's what I fear is, just like if we bring in, like if we changed our plan now and said, we're going to interview a fourth candidate. I can tell you as a contractor how I would feel if that happened. And there were three contractors on the bidder list, and all of a sudden, a fourth one pops up. The first three go, oh, who do they know? That they got themselves back on the list. And so that's why I'm, you know, probably sticking with the three as wise, that we don't run off someone that's really, really good. And he goes, I'll just take the job over here, these people are playing games with me. And so to, if people want to be a board member and they want to make big decisions, they need to seek, they need to run for the school board. But we can have our individual conversations with people that we are comfortable with talking to. You know, I have people that, you know, talk to me. You have people that talk, that can help you form your opinions and you can sort it out. But I don't know that we need to, to go get and.
I think when we, when we initially started this process, this is just my recollection. When we initially started this process, we said that we wanted to do what was going to be best for our schools. We wanted to have community input.
We did. At time.
We had, we had some.
They had, they, they could come. They, they chose not to at the time. They were given the time to come. If they chose not to participate, that was their choice. I don't think they need.
I'm just putting this before you.
I don't think that if, if they wanted to come, I remember Ms. McCall had people, and I had groups and different ones. And, and I know our legal department worked and worked and worked to get all these places for everybody to speak. We made it public, it was advertised where everybody could go. And now people are going, oh, well, I didn't go to that, so now I want to have a say. I think they missed the train.
Well, I think we gave plenty of opportunity for community input. I, I may make a suggestion that one thing that might work is if, if we want to have a community advisory to take a look at the three candidates, where, where we have our business community. And maybe we have a, a committee of seven to nine that actually get to meet the candidates and, and rate them. And we each have a say in that. I would not want to open this up to the whole community, but I would be willing. But I would be willing to, I don't think it's choosing the people. I think that it's giving them the opportunity to let us know who, who they.
No, no, what I'm saying is, who do you choose as on this committee? This advisory committee?
We would, we would.
I think we would each maybe choose two. Just, you know, to have community members have a conversation. I am fine with not doing anything, but, but if, if we want some community input on the candidates, then I think we have to be really strategic about how we do that and who that is. And people that are leaders in the community.
But some perceive certain people as leaders and others perceive others as leaders.
Well, I, I'm just suggesting, I'm just suggesting that if we want to do anything, we do it on a smaller scale with an advisory group of community leaders, a smaller group, just to, for them to be able to meet the candidates and evaluate. That's, that's, I would not want to open this up to the whole community.
Okay, what I'd like to do, since we hired Ray and Associates, I believe they have probably done, they're, they've done, they've done this type of work for how many years now? Why don't we, since we paid them to help us, why don't we let them do their job and tell us?
This came from Ray and Associates.
But did they recommend this, or did we ask them to print this? But.
This came, you could call, you could call.
But did they just send it out of the clear blue? Or did you have to ask for it?
It's not a question, this came from Ray and Associates.
So they, they submitted this and said?
They said we should do this then?
They said that this was, this is what they've done in other districts. I think they did it in Hillsborough, as a matter of fact.
Okay, so you weren't approached. You weren't approached and like, okay, we need to do this. They submitted it on?
They on their own just said, y'all can do this?
No, 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 this is a conversation that I had. Something missing, something missing, there's something missing. That's how this all came.
Oh, okay. Well, I do believe that Reason Associates did come here. They took in a lot of community input, and this is just, again, how are we going to pick and choose who we want to be on this committee? And then as soon as we do that, we're going to be scrutinized that we didn't choose a certain committee. And I think it, we made it to this point, and we did include them, the community earlier. And I think my personal opinion is now the board is taking this movement forward. But that's where I stand. I don't know where Ms. Thrower or Ms.
No, I'm, I'm fine.
You're, you're fine with that? Okay.
Either way, but I wanted to put it out there.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
For the record, Ms. Thrower.
I'm remembering that we did a, a survey online. We did community outreach all across the county. We made ourselves as school board members very approachable through email and messaging to get all kinds of input. And I really honor that, that input. And so just for the record, I never met number four, never heard his name before the other day. So I'm not promoting anybody. What I am promoting is the skill set and the character and the integrity that appears to be part of this person's DNA. And that comes from direct input from the community. And that's always going to be what I use to help make my decisions. So do I feel like we've done enough outreach to the community? Do I feel like I've gotten enough input? Absolutely. And I have proposed what I proposed tonight, so it is what it is. That's where I'm at.
We good with this, then? I'm, I'm good with it. I just wanted, I wanted to do my, my diligence as a, as a chairman and not have a conversation and not bring it back to you.
I think we're good.
Thank you, that's being a great chair.
It makes me wonder if Hillsborough did a online survey and everything that we did up front with all of those forums and town halls.
And, and the comments from the community was, thank you for the opportunity. It was very well organized and all of that, so.
So, back to Ms. Thrower's issue, not issue, but concern. I think, again, I'm still at the point that I think we, there was a gap, that we need to follow the process as it is.
If you change something like that, even though we, even though we didn't know the person, when you, when you make a plan and then you go back and you add someone to it, the candidates start to wonder, why was that person added? And we could lose.
You know, and, and, but it's okay. You know, it is, it is what it is. If we're not satisfied with the top three, then we can bring back others, you know? I'm willing to, to, to go with it because I know that I don't have, you know, consensus. So it is what it is. I, I brought it back up and, and that's that, so let's go.
I think, Ms. Thrower. I think, I think, I think you're right, Ms. Thrower. When, I'm like that, when, when the Lord places something on my mind, if I don't say it, I'm, I'm, he's going to hold me accountable.
Right.
So I'm glad you followed through what he told you to say and do. Okay? All right, so we're good with all that. Did we get any clarity about the custodial, what they're going to be doing? Are they coming back to work or what? Dr. Dr. Graham, Grantham is going to be dealing with that, correct?
That'll be through the unions.
Okay, through the unions.
But again, based on the board's recommendations this evening, so.
I think, as I said before, we're in some uncertain times. Everybody jumped, because Stacy coughed.
I've been coughing since November, so.
We're living in some uncertain times. We're dealing with some, we're dealing, we're, we're swimming in some uncharted waters. We're dealing with some, we're dealing, we're swimming in some uncharted waters. And we're doing the best that we can do right now. You've heard, you heard tonight, in the past few weeks, past few meetings that we've had, you've heard a lot of passion and compassion from all of our board members, our superintendent. It's because we want to do what's right. It's because we want to do what's right. We don't want to leave any kid behind. We don't want to put any staff member, any person in danger. The executive order 2091 is properly named Safer at Home Act. Safer at home. So we recognize what the governor said and that he made the decision that it is safer for our people to be at home. Those people that we can get to be at home, we want them home. But we do know that business still has to go forward. And having the least amount of people is going to help us get beyond COVID-19. I want to encourage all of our staff, all of our parents, everybody that's listening, please take care of yourself. Please take care of yourself. Heed those warnings and do those things that you need to do to be safe. And I thank all of our staff for everything that they're doing. I'm seeing some wonderful things. It never ceases to amaze me. It's always like, in the worst of times, you see the best of people come out. And that's what's been happening. We're seeing the best of our folk come out. And not that it's not always been shown, but it's shown even more. And so we're going to do what's right. Parents, please contact, please contact these schools. If you need Chromebooks, if you need technology, please contact them because the window is going to shut. And once it's shut, it's shut. Please, if you don't have the technology and these kids need packets or whatever, contact your school, contact the teachers to let them know what your kid specifically needs. We need to make sure that every kid is still doing something over this break. We've made great gains. We don't need to go backwards. We don't need to go backwards. We know there's going to be some regression automatically, but we don't need to go all the way back. So please, contact your schools. And with that being said, I don't have any more comments tonight. I will be in, oh, attorney does have one.
I just wanted to make sure for the record, there were no public comments. I don't know if we actually, okay.
There were no public, yeah, we didn't ask.
And before you close, I would like, I did just get a text message that tomorrow, the schools in Palm Beach County do close, and there will be no principal at any school. So we made the right decision that that's basically where we're at, unless they need to come in.
So.
Only the people doing food will be there.
Yeah. So Ms. McCall, Ms. Thoror, Ms. Stacy, Ms. King, it's an honor to work with you guys on this board. And I know sometimes people may say they are just out there. But what you see is folk. I have, I have, tonight, while I'm sitting here. But what you see within us is you see people who are dedicated. You see folk who are just want to do the right thing, who's going to do the right thing. And we're going to make sure that it gets done in such a way that our people are taken care of and our kids are educated. So again, if there's nothing else being, no other business to transact, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I need to clarify something. And maybe it was just because my eyes were bugging from everything I was reading, but I was under the impression that one of our candidates was a superintendent. But maybe it was because the district enrollment is 320,000 students.
They're not.
And thinking that she was a superintendent already, but she is a deputy. So that puts us with, one with super and two with deputy.
Thank you, Ms. Thoror, for that. So stay tuned, stay tuned. We're going to be coming back in a few, a week or so with some other things, but stay tuned. Please be safe. Please be safe. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Moved by Ms. McCall, seconded by Ms. Thoror. All in favor, seated by I. Meeting adjourned at 7:14 PM. Thank you, ladies.